I would like to call this evening's meeting of the City of Tacoma Park City Council to order with the clerk. Please call the roll.
Mayor Cersei.
Here.
Councilmember Folcher.
Present.
Councilmember Dibala.
Present.
Councilmember, Councilmember, I'm so sorry. Councilmember Gibson is here. Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Hansak.
Present.
Councilmember Small.
In the House.
Good evening, everyone. We have a pretty packed agenda, but it is going to open with an opportunity for us to celebrate some of our wonderful businesses that will be leaving our community. There are no changes to tonight's agenda, but I am going to quickly walk through the schedule for our upcoming meetings. So as was mentioned today, we will have a number of proclamations in honor of businesses in our community that will be leaving. We'll also have a legislative update as well as presentations on our minor master plan. The strategic plan update as it relates to housing economic development strategic plan as well as the sustainability and climate action framework, as well as a presentation on the legislative bond initiative for the library construction. Followed by a voting session on the legislative bond initiative for library construction. On Monday, January 30th, starting at 6:30, the council will have a special meeting. It will be a retreat for us to discuss our city council priorities. On Wednesday, February 1st, 7:30, for the record, we will start with a Black History Month proclamation, followed by a legislative update and tentatively a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with PEPCO related to the new BikeWay project. We'll also have work sessions on the FY23 budget amendment number five and an overview of boards and committees, including recruitment, appointments, and council process for application review. On Wednesday, February 8th, we will start with a legislative update as well as a voting session on the first reading approving FY23 budget amendment number five. And we'll also have a storm water update, so that will take us through the next week or so. And so now I have the pleasure to read a number of proclamations for some of our beloved businesses in the City of Tacoma Park. We hate to see you go, but we appreciate the wonderful service that you all have provided for us. So I will be reading a proclamation recognizing the closure of Mark's Kitchen. A proclamation recognizing the closure of Kinetic Artistry, as well as a proclamation recognizing the closure of Tacoma Framers. And so I'm going to start with a proclamation recognizing the closing of Mark's Kitchen. Whereas Mark's Kitchen will be closing its Tacoma Park restaurant after operating 32 years in Tacoma Park. And whereas Mark Choi is the founder and owner of Mark's Kitchen. And whereas Mark's first business in Tacoma Park was the Tacoma Grocery, which he opened in 1988. And whereas Mark Choi pitched a plan to the Electric Made Restaurant to take over his space for his casual full-service family restaurant concept, Mark's Kitchen, in 1990. And whereas Mark's Kitchen was offered a wide, has offered a wide variety of options for breakfast, lunch, and dinner, including many Korean specialties and vegetarian options, all made from scratch. And whereas Mark's Kitchen has employed hundreds of Tacoma Park residents over the years, including many teens who had their first job at Mark's. And whereas Mark's Kitchen has hosted weekly benefit nights and has provided thousands of dollars to community groups and nonprofits to further their missions. And whereas Mark's Kitchen has been a community meeting space where residents catch up with neighbors and make new friends. And whereas Mark's Kitchen has become a Tacoma Park institution and Mark Choi and Mark's Kitchen that will be greatly missed by the community. And now therefore I, Talisha Cersei, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, hereby congratulate Mark Choi on the long relationship with Mark's Kitchen and Tacoma Park and thank him for his service and friendship to the Tacoma Park community. Our next proclamation, and we will, we will ask, we'll do the photo thing after we've read all of the proclamations. Our next proclamation, recognizing the closing of Kinetic Artistry. Whereas Kinetic Artistry will be closing its shop after operating 50 years in Tacoma Park. And whereas Eric Seppler is the founder and owner of Kinetic Artistry. And whereas Kinetic Artistry has been the supplier of theatrical arts organizations like theaters, schools, churches, and special event venues like the Kennedy Center for its theater, Smithsonian museums, World Bank, and National Archives and more. And whereas Kinetic Artistry was a longtime sole DC area supplier of props, drapery, scenic paint, special effects, and lighting. And whereas Kinetic Artistry's highly sought-after powerful fog machines were used by area DC fire departments, the FAA, and WAMADA for important smoke tests and training. And, and whereas Kinetic Artistry offered theatrical makeup that has long been a, that has been a longtime favorite Halloween destination for the Tacoma Park community. And whereas Kinetic Artistry employed hundreds of employees over the years, five of whom launched related businesses after working with Mark. And whereas Kinetic Artistry has become a Tacoma Park institution, and Eric Seppler will be greatly missed by the community. Now therefore I, Talisha Cersei, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, hereby congratulate Mark, I'm sorry, Eric Seppler for his retirement and thank him for his service and friendship to the Tacoma Park community. And lastly, a proclamation recognizing the closing of Tacoma Farmers. Whereas Tacoma, I'm sorry, Framers, I'm so sorry. Whereas Tacoma Framers will be closing after operating as a framing shop for three generations. And whereas Tacoma Framers has been an operational framing shop since 1948 when it was started by the artillery family. And whereas Mark Howard is the owner of Tacoma Framers, which is purchased, which was purchased by his father, Alden Howard Jr., and his uncle Otis in 1970 from the artillery family. And whereas Alden Howard Jr. worked for a framing shop for years in Washington DC and made frames for the National Galleries of Art for purchasing his shop in Tacoma, before purchasing his shop in Tacoma Park. And whereas Mark Howard took over the business from his father in 2000. And whereas Tacoma Framers has highly, has provided high quality and handcrafted framing and matting services. And whereas Tacoma Framers also has, was home to the collaborative, collectible palace place from 1980 to 2000, offering antiques and collectibles and run by Mark Howard's mother, Margaret Howard, and Aunt Betty Morgan Anne. Whereas Tacoma Framers has helped beautify people's homes, save important memorabilia, and protect important works. And whereas the family and Mark Howard lived above the shop for years. And whereas Mark honored his family business by keeping the framing tradition alive as well as providing a small yard sale in the front window, a nod to the collectible place. And whereas Tacoma Framers has become a Tacoma Park institution, and Mark Howard will be greatly missed by the community. Now therefore I, Talisha Cersei, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, hereby congratulate Mark Howard on his retirement and thank him for his service and friendship to the Tacoma Park community. Now we would love the opportunity to take a picture with the honorees. And so I would love if Mark and Eric would mind coming up so that we can take pictures with you in appreciation. And I just do want to reiterate, you all have been mainstays in our community. And we are so grateful for you dedicating not only your talents and your treasure, but being so invested in the community overall. So thank you so much for all that you've done for our community, and you will be dearly missed. All right, so I am preparing the proclamations so that you can hold them up for the photo op. And I want to ask my colleagues to please join me in taking photos. But Mark is not, Mark Howard is not here. All right, well, that was fun. Break things up a little bit. So now we will have our legislative update, and I just wanted to make sure that Ann, perfect. Wonderful. We are joined today by Ann Seacott, who is our lobbyist who works advocating for the city in Annapolis. And so I will turn things over to you, Ann, to provide us with the legislative update.
Thank you very much. I think I'm going to do two parts tonight. One part is just a quick overview of what's happened since last week. Last Wednesday, of course, was very exciting because of the inauguration. And then on Friday, we saw the governor's budget, his proposed budget for fiscal year '24. And so we're still digging through, there was just a briefing today on some of the high-level stuff that's, that's in the budget. And we're still digging through to get to some of the finer detail that, that we generally look for. And so budget hearings will start Friday and then continue throughout most of the rest of the session. And we are being told to expect several what are called supplemental budgets during the legislative session, which is really, I think, where this governor's going to put his mark on the budget because of the, the timing of things. This budget is, was largely put together by the outgoing administration. So, so there's still a lot of interesting things yet to, to come in terms of the things, the priorities that Governor Moore wants to prioritize. We've heard, you know, several more appointments, you know, that, that's all being filled out. And of course, the folks who are right now acting secretaries until they are confirmed by the Senate are probably also looking at who they're going to bring onto their staffs. So we're very excited to start learning who's going to be sticking around and who are the new people that are going to be brought in. And then we are starting with bill hearings next week. One of the priorities that's been identified that Tacoma Park supported last year around home efficiencies and in, including low-income housing. It has a hearing coming up next week, and so we're going to get started with the bill hearings probably pretty robustly shortly. The second part of what I wanted to talk about is priorities. This came up as, and a question last week, and we talked about how to, how we will discuss priorities and kind of what they are, and just making sure everybody has these. And then as Mayor Cersei talked about, there's going to be a retreat next week of the council to, I think, further dive into these priorities to see if anything changes. But in the meantime, wanted to go through these. So we, so some, most of these things were presented back in December at, at a, at a meeting. And they included capital improvement, which we're going to hear about later this evening about the library. We have talked about supporting issues, looking for opportunities to better, for municipalities to be able to better sustain themselves fiscally. And so we've talked, and this is something that the Maryland Municipal League has prioritized this year as well, and looking at various kinds of changes or additions to revenue streams to help with city, city government operations. I will continue to prioritize issues around transportation and the investment in infrastructure as we have for several years. On housing issues, which have been a major topic. It's things that include supporting renters and also promoting the development of more affordable housing. And also looking at energy efficiency as that, that happens. And there is a very big interest, as we all know, in issues around climate change. And so we are going to be monitoring, there's going to be a lot, as there have been for several years now, of bills related to climate change. Things that were specifically brought up by council members either in writing or at previous meeting include Councilmember Dibala talking about stormwater mitigation, as well as implementation of the Climate Solutions Bill that passed last session. Councilmember Gibson talks as well about some of the ecosystem protections that are needed in terms of some of the systems that we have to try to protect our environment. So we're keeping an eye out for all of those bills. And then the right interests that have been raised include Councilmember Hansak talking about childcare and some of the regulations specific to the physical location, not, not just any and all, but specific to that piece. And then looking at the, there will be legislation again this session related to family leave and how that gets implemented and other issues that could impact the workforce of the city, hopefully for the good. But we'll be identifying those pieces of legislation as well. So I just wanted to review those items and then simply, you know, talk about the process. And I think the council has been provided with a bill chart that is the list, the very short list right now of bills that we've identified, and they're divided up into various categories. And there was, I think, some desire, by at least some council members expressed last week, to continue to receive the full list of bills. And we are very happy to pass that along. If, if, if I can indulge you all for just a couple more moments, what I'd like to do is also, there is, there, I think, was a desire to figure out how to look at, at sort of all of the bills that might be on a particular topic. And so there's, there's a lot to do here, but I just very quickly wanted to share how you can look up a bill or subjects that you might be interested in, in the legislation, in the General Assembly. So when you go to the General Assembly website, you can go over here to this tab on the far right that says "Search." Click on "Legislation." And when computers aren't horribly slow, they will take you to a page where you can look at the current session. You also can go back and look at previous sessions. And you, if you have a bill number that you want to look up, you can, if you know the sponsor of a bill, you can look it up. And then "Subjects" is the other area. And so if you wanted to do something, let's say on childcare, you can type in childcare and all the bills that have been introduced to date related to the topic of childcare will appear. And so you can do that with those very many categories. So that's super brief. There are a lot of tutorials. If you scroll to the bottom of the homepage, there are video tutorials down here way at the bottom that I have found helpful since the creation of this new website. So just wanted to let you know that so that for the public, for council members who are interested in looking at what kinds of bills have been introduced in the General Assembly.
Great, thank you so much, Ann. And just for my colleague's information, the priorities that, that Ann walked through was a combination of more detailed description of the MML priorities, because I know we kind of had a top-level discussion, but this provides a little bit more detail around what the prior council had moved forward. Additionally, we tried to incorporate priority items that were mentioned either in writing to, to the city manager as well as those topics that may have come up during the District 20 discussion that was shared. I want to encourage, especially as we are talking through priorities for, on Monday, that if there are additional legislative priorities that we have not captured thus far that you all may have, it would be helpful for us to be prepared to talk through some of those priorities on Monday. Also, Ann put together the spreadsheet, and I think we will, members of council will be receiving that spreadsheet. Perhaps, it's probably already in our inboxes, but we will make sure that everyone has the list of the bills. Yes, the bill chart for, that has been flagged by Ann for our, our understanding and knowledge. Councilmember Small?
Along those lines, I'm just trying to make clear, Ann. So on the thing that you just showed on the screen, are, you have a document that's coded with your professional understanding about what those priorities are and how they pertain to the current list of bills, right? And that's what we're talking about now? We're talking about an additional document to the large document?
Correct. So everyone should receive in their inbox, as was discussed during the last legislative update, and took into consideration all of the prior council's legislative priorities. Information that was shared during the D-20 delegation meeting, as well as any priorities that members of council right now have identified. And so Ann has gone through the bills that have kind of come through today, and based on her professional assessment, it's created a shortlist for us to start working, to be aware of, and things we may want to follow. Ann, am I, am I missing anything about what everyone should expect in terms of next steps?
You've got it.
Thank you, I just, I was just trying to be clear. I could, I had the previous larger documents, but I didn't have the, the smaller one, so just making sure.
Yep. And I think that was because certain, certain members of council wanted to see that full list. And so this way, everyone could kind of have a better understanding of how.
That's cool with me, I just, I just making sure I wasn't confused.
Yeah, all right. Okay, any other comments or questions for, for Ann? And I think we've already, we have one testimony that we've already.
Thank you, Anne.
Thank you, Anne, for the testimony for next week for the Delegate Charcutian's Low-Income Energy Efficiency Bill that will be the subject of a Senate hearing on, a Senate committee hearing on Tuesday.
And I believe maybe ranked choice voting is something else that should be making its way eventually, I think?
It will. It did, it was, it was voted on, it was passed out of the Montgomery County delegation and will be introduced any day now as a bill in the assigned committee. It is a, it is a local bill, it is a Montgomery County bill.
And I'm sorry.
Councilmember Small?
And then also, and the last thing is, if we're talking about bills that are sponsored by District 20 people, has there been, hey, trying to wear my glasses with these masks? In order to not look crazy at you and be able to see, I'm going to have to, I apologize. So is there a pathway forward for Delegate Charcutian's bill about state highway and authorizations? Or potentially the legislation that Delegate Moon indicated would be more of a place-based opportunity to provide dollars for traffic calming, funding pedestrian-type stuff?
So, you know, I, I believe, I have a little better, I think, grip on the Delegate Charcutian's State Highway Bill. Based on conversations with her, I, I believe there is a path forward, because I think the, one of the big holdups last year was a fiscal note. But I think that the funding isn't as big an issue this year because of the planned capital dollars. And I, I actually have not been hearing yet the, the bill that Delegate Moon mentioned, unless it came out today, I've not seen it yet. So I haven't heard anybody talking about it yet.
In the event that there's an opportunity to speak to the benefits of either one of those, I'd be happy to testify.
Great. I will note that, thank you.
Thank you. And, and Anne, just correct me if I'm wrong, I, I feel like we might have, for Delegate Charcutian's bill on SHA, I believe we might have had a testimony. I don't know why I feel like I reviewed a testimony related to pedestrian safety and SHA. Yeah. So I just want to make sure, I feel like some.
I think for the bills that are returning from last year, I've been trying to update, get a head start on updating the testimony with the assumption that the city would want to weigh in on some of those again. So that, that maybe is, is what you saw.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's, because I believe I've provided some edits. So I think that may be tied to Delegate Charcutian's bill. And I believe Councilmember Dibala has seen the energy efficiency one. And so I think the big thing is perhaps Councilmember Small just making you aware of what that prior testimony entail, so that you're, you're aware as well.
Certainly, I'd be happy. Sorry, I'd be, I'd be happy to, to review it or anything else. I just wanted to support the District 20 team, and there, there are some real benefits in a lot of places if that were to come to fruition.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Dibala?
Two things, to remind everyone that on the city website, if you type in legislative advocacy, you get the list of testimony from last year that was filed on all the different bills that were of interest last year. So when Anne is talking about legislation we filed, you can look at it, it's right there. Ditto for the public if you want to see it. I wanted to double back for a minute to the budget and flag a couple of specific items that are likely to be in there related to climate money for local government, and I'll get you specifics. But knowing that we didn't have that on our priorities list, because we didn't have the budget yet, but there might be some specific dollar pools that we are really interested in pursuing, making sure they stay in and then making sure we get them. So just wanted to get that one on the table. Thank you. Is it possible to get that, do we have that list that you just showed us? Do we already have that in writing somewhere, or can you just pop it to us?
If.
The list of, the slides, the priorities.
Those slides, those four slides? If, if you don't have it, I can make sure you get it, absolutely.
I probably got it somewhere. Just can't remember.
Okay. All right. Seeing no more lights. I think that is all of the questions that we have for you, Anne, and thank you so much for joining us this evening, and we will see you again next week.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Now is an opportunity for public comments. We have no voting items this evening, so if you have any comments on any other items, you're welcome to come to the podium.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi. Excuse me, hi, my name is Lori Bose, and I live on Roanoke Avenue, and I'm just here to express some views on plastic issues that I wanted to express at some points. I'll try to be brief. According to some recycling professionals that I follow, plastic bags in recycling are a top source of contamination since they can't be recycled in the same stream, and this slows the recycling process, damages or breaks recycling equipment, and pulls and puts workers at risk of harm since they must untangle the plastic frequently. If that, if that's all true, and I believe it is, I think Tacoma Park could do a little bit more to communicate that in terms of outreach. So in my walks around the neighborhood in Tacoma Park, I see about a third of recycling bins in some neighborhoods seem to contain plastic bags, and it seems to be the same location, so it seems like there's an opportunity there. And in DC, the recycling trucks are emblazoned with advertisements reminding people not to put their bags in the recycling. And then, of course, in other parts of Montgomery County, they, they regularly will put orange warning signs, kind of nasty grams, on, on recycling bins where the contents have plastic or other rejected contents. So I think there's just an opportunity to do possibly a little bit more there. And then on the other side of the reduced reuse recycle spectrum, just, I think there's an opportunity to do a little bit more to support a reduction in the need for plastic bottles by thinking about water access around our community, particularly outside. So particularly, you know, if I walk, say, the, the lower part of Maple Avenue or Northern Flower Avenue, I can barely walk even a block without seeing a number of plastic bottles. And I do, I do try to pick a number of them up, but I can't help but wonder if you could do a little bit more to provide public outdoor water stations. So I've, I've encountered a few around parks, and I haven't done a full census, but I know that when I bike into DC, or even Rock Creek or Arlington, I, I've seen lately a little bit more of an uptick in the water refilling stations outside where, where a lot of people are using, using trails and other things outside. So I just think about high-traffic locations here, say, you know, close to Psycho Creek or by the Farmer's Market, or hopefully some of our future trails. Just be good to include that in the, in the planning. And then additionally, whether that, some of the big, highly-attended festivals or events just ensure that water planning is a component of the, of the process. For instance, one of my partner and I attended the Tacoma Truck Garden Festival on a very hot June day last year. We were kind of surprised that there wasn't any water, there was plenty of alcohol flowing, but there wasn't water flowing. You had to plan ahead and bring your water for the day, or, or buy plastic water bottles to just, just thinking about that as part of the planning. And then I think also, I, I saw on the agenda, there's the Resilience and Adaptation Memo on the agenda this evening, and they even included as a recommendation thinking about access, especially outside to water. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Tacoma Business Association, and I'm here to thank our longtime businesses. These are Tacoma Park institutions that helps establish and define our commercial district, and we're going to miss them. Thank you, Mark's Kitchen, for all the years feeding and supporting our community. Thank you Tacoma Framers, who, who could not be here tonight, for beautifying our homes and protecting our special memorabilia. And thank you Kinetic Artistry for putting Tacoma Park on the map as the D.C. area premier supplier of props and special effects and lighting. You will be missed, and we really wish you well in your retirements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Tara Egan. I'm representing the Tacoma Park Independence Day Committee. And I just wanted to follow up to present a certificate of appreciation to Mark. Mark, the Tacoma Park Independence Day Committee is deeply grateful for Mark's Kitchen's generous longstanding support of the Tacoma Park's annual Fourth of July celebration, and for so many events in the community. Your support has been just vital to the celebration's continued success over the years. Thank you so much for everything you've done for the Tacoma Park community, and thank you for everything you've done for the Fourth of July.
Good evening. My name is Joni Eisenberg. I've lived here in Tacoma Park for 42 years. And I guess it's for 32 years I've gone to Mark's Kitchen, and I just want to say thank you to Mark, not only for me, but for my many friends and family. When I had relatives coming here, we always went to Mark's. Mark's has been a critical part of this community, and we just, many of us, Mark, who are not here, will miss you greatly, and we wish you blessings in the future. Thank you for all the many years and the wonderful meals and kindness that you gave to this community.
Hello, everyone. My name is Vincent Richardson. I am the founder and co-owner of Richardson School of Music, along with my wife, Talisha Richardson. I want to thank the businesses for all the work you've done in community. I want to thank Eric has looked out when I first got into Tacoma Park. He made sure I had the connections for the door, you know how you have to get the special doors. So, you know, just want to thank you for that. But a, but a special thanks to Mark. If you don't know, we are the proud new owners of 7312. And Mark sold the business to us, I mean, not the business, the building to us. But it took a lot of work, and he really wanted us to have it. And it was, it was, he just made it happen for us, and we're really proud of that and really thank him for that. Some people don't know Mark was a music lover. We started in 7318, Carol upstairs, right next to Mark. So sometimes I'd be practicing the piano, and I'd hear, "Beat track, beat track", and it would be Mark screaming across from the window. And I come to the window, I'm like, "Hey, Mark, what's going on? What you doing over there?" So that's kind of how our relationship started. But just really want to thank him, and we're going on our 10 years now. This is our 10th year in Tacoma Park. So what a wonderful way to start our 10th year. I want to thank the community for the support, the donations. Had some awesome investors. Laura is always the ear to be able to call and bounce ideas and really help and be an awesome supporter for the school. So I just thank the community. We still need help. We still need help. There's a lot of work that needs to be done in the building, so we still need your support, still need financial support. But we are, we're here, we're here to stay. So thank you.
Any other public comments? Do we have any one remotely?
We do, we have three commenters remotely.
Wonderful.
We have Lori McGilvery.
Okay. Lori, you have three minutes.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sircy and council members. Lori McGilvery, I live at 7010 Woodland Avenue in Ward 3. And I just wanted to give you a heads up, this wasn't part of my comments, but I'm going to mention it anyway. But I'm a member of the Public Service Commission Work Group that's writing regulations for community choice energy that I know is of interest to the city. We just delivered our work group report to the commission yesterday, and they've already set the dates for a rulemaking hearing for February 23rd with public comments due the 16th. I urge you to pay attention to this. It was not a consensus document. There are two sets of regulations, kind of, the county and the Public Service Commission staff don't see eye to eye, so it's important to pay attention to. But really, the main focus of my comments tonight are, are on the topics that you'll be hearing more about, the Minor-Master Plan, the updates for housing and community development and sustainability and climate action. And I, I just want to emphasize that we really have a tremendous opportunity to address the challenges of climate change and affordable housing. We really can reduce greenhouse gases from buildings and reduce utility costs for low-income residents. Some buildings are going to have to do this through building energy performance standards, but Tacoma Park can really get ahead of the curve and go beyond by working with smaller multifamily buildings in our community, and we should. And part of the reason that we can really do this is that we have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity with the resources that are coming from the federal, state, and county levels that can be directed towards energy efficiency requirements and, and especially targeted at low-income residents. Third, the resources that are out there are really dizzying and can be a barrier for building owners. So I urge the city to look for ways that you can assist building owners with energy audits and financing plans so they can figure out how to do these improvements. Tacoma Park's a great place to pilot some of these things because of rent stabilization, so we can figure out how not to have rents increase as a result of the building improvements. Lastly, I know I've been talking about portable housing for existing buildings, but the Minor-Master Plan really offers an opportunity to increase portable housing and be a model for net-zero, climate-friendly buildings. So I appreciate the work you've done so far, and really urge you to redouble efforts with a sense of urgency to take advantage of all of these opportunities. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Karen Elrich.
Hi, my name is Karen Elrich, and my home is over in Ward 5. And I'm here as a member of the Climate Action Coffee, and would like to welcome our new mayor and members of the city council to our new, to their new leadership roles. There are some local and regional climate issues that we are concerned about, and I wanted to talk about them tonight. Dorothy's Woods, we hope to work with the city to develop this area into a demonstration wetlands, woodlands area with labeled trees and paths showcasing native plants that will work well in this area. And with Friends of Dorothy's Woods, we've held several successful cleanup days to remove invasive weeds. And we'd like the city to revisit the procedure of the 10-day waiver requirement. We urge the city to actively promote and involve homeowners in the effort to increase habitat and biodiversity by creating contiguous wildlife corridors and joining, and joining the efforts of Mount Rainier and other local communities. We want to encourage our homeowners to decrease grass lawn, increase native plantings, remove invasive plants, and leave the leaves every autumn to protect our caterpillars and other insects. The Public Space Management Plan, we'd like to forge and develop communication with our homeowners, renters, and neighborhood association to ensure they're input into developing this plan. We need to support local legislation to mitigate against rising average, average temperatures by planting more canopy trees and supporting the efforts of Anna Mishjohn and Marty Fry, especially in Wards 5 and Ward 6. The Tacoma Park Community Food Forest Group is working with Tacoma Park Elementary School Principal and PTA to establish a food forest. A food forest mimics a forest structure with tall trees, understoryed trees and shrubs and berry bushes that produce edible foods and mitigates food insecurity in our community. Food force reduce flooding, boost wildlife habitat, and increase biodiversity, increasing resilience in the face of climatic shock. We encourage you to visit the existing food forests in Hyattsville, Mount Rainier, and Bowie. We have a PowerPoint presentation that we'd love to present to you one day in the future. We encourage expanding the role and transparency of Tacoma Park's Green Team, forging a link between the Green Team and members of CAC. In the Minor-Master Plan, we are concerned about the future development on the campus of the former Washington Adventist Hospital and its impact on the ecology and stormwater runoff when they do their development there. We encourage the city to engage with residents for input to complement the information of stormwater management, a major issue for Tacoma Park as it is in other communities. We are excited by the city's contract with the Low-Impact Development Center and look forward to the forward to the city implementing their recommendation. Tacoma Park should join other leading communities in crafting and executing comprehensive stormwater management strategies on both public and private property. We appreciate the city, we appreciate the city's support of CAC's National Pollinator Week and hope to encourage your continued participation. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, Ms. Elrich, if you wouldn't mind, if you have that statement in writing, if you wouldn't mind sending it to the council, that would be great. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Hubener?
Good evening and congratulations, mayor and members of the council. I wish you the best of luck. It's a long road. I was perplexed by parts of the budget discussion at last Wednesday's council meeting. The Director of Finance was scheduled by the mayor to give a presentation about the general fund outlook that was released the previous Friday at the direction of the city's council. Susan Chung was disrespected and not allowed to even finish her presentation. Then she was roundly congratulated on her fine work. Yet her work seems to have been ignored or badly misunderstood. Commentary from the deus was that there is no budget deficit. However, that was never adequately addressed or discussed. It is clear on page six of that document that there have been continuous budget deficits in 2019, 2020, and in 2021. There would have been a deficit in 2022, except for the ARPA funds. That was fully explained on page 12 where it clearly states, quote, "In FY22, the city had a surplus of $958,532 in the general funds due to the recognition of the one-time revenue of $1.19 million from the ARPA fund. Absent the ARPA funds transfer, FY22 would have had a deficit of $231,465 and a four-year budget total of $2,847,662." And that's just in the general fund. Another significant oversight by the council at last week's meeting was addressed by Arthur David Olson during prior public comments. He highlighted the precipitous drawdown of the unassigned reserve funds. A review of the FY22 CAFRA shows that on page 37, that the unassigned reserve funds were depleted by over $2.5 million in FY22. As ADO pointed out, this leaves the unassigned reserves fund balance at $4.56 million, right at the 17% council-mandated threshold for unassigned reserve funds. In other words, there is no longer any backstop to bail out another budget in deficit. It appears that the city manager and finance director are being derided by the council as they made an attempt to present facts previously approved or at least reviewed. Then they are overridden by the council on the hiring freeze, which was a clear attempt on the part of the city manager to stop the bleeding of revenue without releasing any current staff. I ask, what is this council's solution to these deficits? And I thank you for your attention to this very important matter.
Thank you, Mr. Hubener. Are there any other comments? Great. Thank you so much. Now, we can start with council comments. Councilmember Small.
Thank you, Mayor Searcy. I did not get the opportunity to give the comments that I attended to last week due to the facts and the ground and the exigent circumstances, but I wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, I am one of the people in the city of Tacoma Park that has the luxury of seeing the municipal workers in Tacoma Park work a good deal. I have kids who run around in a variety of places between here and the rec center and other places. And so I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew how inconceivably proud I am of the efforts that people do make around here to be responsive to the citizens that they are servicing and the importance of servicing all of the parties in Tacoma Park. You're solid as earth. Sorry if pointed questions are pointed at you. But the reason for this is because we are laws and we're not men. There's nobody who has the authority to unilaterally throw anything out of any given window. And, you know, if we're going to report things, we should report things accurately. I personally don't think that it is of value to misrepresent anything about economic issues and I look forward to speaking to Mr. Hubener and anyone else about these things. The reason for this is because I think there is a distinction between being collegial and congenial, but both of those things are really just manners of affect. And I would argue that if you look across different areas and different wards, they haven't necessarily done everyone the same amount of good. In particular, as we move forward on a couple of things, I think it is important to note that you can get associated with things that aren't necessarily of value to you if you try to be too congenial or collegial. People lie. And so it sometimes can be your socioeconomic position that makes you think that it is moral to do these things. For example, if you looked on the internet or anything on social media, you would have seen that there is a drive afoot to materially misrepresent any number of things about the development at the Tacoma Metro. That is anathema. And if it was a Trumper, people would be going crazy about how we exploit people and try to get people riled up about things that aren't real. The fundamental aspects of doing things that are actually real are really important. And just because we have sophisticated actors around here that know how to manipulate the circumstances by which other people make decisions doesn't mean that you shouldn't play it straight. Thank you.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes, first, I just always appreciate the public comments. Everyone that spoke, spoke very passionately about many things, the thank yous to Mark and the budget and the climate issues. I thank you very much. We're here to serve the public and you are bringing important information to us. Two points I just want to hold up. In terms of Ward Three, this having a community public safety meeting tomorrow, 7:00 and 9:00, at the Azalea Room in this building, municipal building. It's in-person or Zoom. You would need to register to get on Zoom. And it will include an update on some incidents in Ward Three. But I, everyone is welcome to that, especially Ward Three, but everyone in the city is welcome to come and join in. I also want to hold up what I think is a really good movement forward and a project that the public works and the city has authorized with the Low Impact Development Center, looking at stormwater resiliency study. That particular study is on the city's website. It's worth looking at. There are some 20 sites that are going to be reviewed by the contractor that was hired. And he, that contracting team has been very pleased to have neighbors' input, resident input, on their visits. I was able to join a couple of those site visits along with my colleague, Councilmember Dibala. So I really, I'm really pleased that the city has made that hiring and that they are looking at the impact of flooding on not only public but private property as well. It's a really good sign of looking at a complicated and serious issue of flooding and stormwater. That's all.
Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to take a minute tonight to comment on the departure of Mark Chow from the city and the great value he was to the city, not just through his food and hospitality at the restaurant, but also with his generous outpouring of support for many nonprofit organizations in the city. I do a lot of work with the Adventist Community Services and I know that he provided quite frequently, you know, benefit days for Adventist Community Services. But there was one, one thing that showed a different side of Mark that happened during the pandemic. Adventist Community Services decided that Mark had given so much to them that when it came Thanksgiving time, they decided that they would buy Thanksgiving dinner from Mark. One might think that's a strange place to buy Thanksgiving dinner, and Mark thought it was strange, too. He quite honestly said he didn't have any idea how to make a Thanksgiving dinner. But Adventist Community Services expressed great confidence in his ability. And as it turned out, he did on the day that they were going to celebrate Thanksgiving. He provided dinners for everyone there that Adventist Community Services paid for. And the end result is that the next year, they wanted to get their Thanksgiving dinner from Mark's Kitchen again because they said it was the best Thanksgiving dinner they'd ever had. It's a tribute to the, to his abilities and also support of the community. Thank you.
Councilmember Hansa?
Thank you, mayor. I just want to acknowledge also all of the people that have come out tonight. It was, I haven't seen this many people since I joined council. In fact, I couldn't even find a parking space. I was like, I should have taken my public transport or walked in the rain. So thanks for coming out, everybody, and offering your thoughts. There were at least two people here, I believe, who are from Ward Five and I look forward to meeting one of them who I think I haven't met yet. And I really appreciated your comments about recycling and plastic bags. I've noted myself that I think we could do some better marking of a lot of the bins and also just communicating with people about what we do here versus across the street in Silver Spring. And please feel free to reach out. And Karen, it was great to hear from you tonight about Climate Action Coffee, also to see you talking about water issues with a local group here online right before the meeting. I look forward to talking more about some of our local water quality issues as well as many of the other issues you brought forward, including food forests and native plant issues. I'm all ears, so come out and chat. And then I just wanted to give a big nod to our local businesses. I myself have been here for 20 years and I have a few really fond memories. I mentioned one to Mark, which was my now 16-year-old son said, "What? Mark can't leave this community? Don't you remember when I was two and we ate across, you know, just the two of us sitting at Mark's Kitchen?" And I almost brought tears to my eyes, you know, thinking about that memory. As well as the Richardson School of Music, my son was one of the very first, I know he's not leaving, he's just getting going here. But I hope that we'll see you here, Vincent, for the next 50 years. That's my hope, because my son was playing a euphonium at the age of five and he was one of the first, you know, handful of students and I love that school. And then finally, I just wanted to say that I really enjoyed seeing the Long Branch mural going up. Just, it's not in the city, but it's a real part of our ward and a part of our city, that the Long Branch corner is there. And a bunch of our District 20 reps came out and a lot of other people, and it was a great event. And I hope we can see more of that kind of art across the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Dibala?
Thank you, mayor. A few things, thanks, of course, to the businesses, the business people who are leaving our community and will be missed. And I don't even want to get started on Mark's Kitchen stories, so I won't. Ditto with Richardson's stories. I am a student, I have been a student there for some time. So, regional, last week was a busy week. There were two COD meetings that I attended. One was the Climate and Energy Group. It was at the auto show. It had two panels on how to spur adoption of electric vehicles and how to expand the regional charging network. I learned a great deal. It was very interesting and I might have picked up a tip. This is for the Public Works Director. I might have picked up a tip about EV charging station funding that I'll pass on to you. There was also a Chesapeake Bay Policy Council meeting, which myself and Councilmember Gibson attended. A staff person from Senator Carden talked about Chesapeake Bay-related funding. I didn't come up with any tips for us, but I did appreciate the connection with Senator Carden's office. And I will let the mayor talk about the MML meeting. I would like to ask, this is my last thing, committees, can we still accept applications? Yes, okay. So there had been a deadline, but I've had a couple, always at the last minute, a couple people ask if they could put in. All right. Thank you for that. That's it for me.
Councilmember Fulter?
I also want to thank, you know, in particular, two of the businesses. You know, Kinetic Artistry, I was a theater geek and so it was a big deal in high school to get to go to Kinetic Artistry. I never got to go because I was a sound computer geek. But the people that would come here and look at the makeup and look at the films for the lights were always super excited. And it made Tacoma Park seem like a really cool place to be when I was in high school. And the same thing with Mark's Kitchen. I used to come here on the weekends, eat at Mark's Kitchen, walk around with my mom while we were living out in Burtonsville, and it made us strive to live here. And so it's really important, these businesses, that make people want to be here. And when I started working at Mark's Kitchen, it felt like I had made it and I was like a real Tacoma Parker, because there I was, working in an establishment that was part of Tacoma Park. And as sad as I am to see those businesses leave, I'm super excited for them to retire. Like, everybody, everybody should get to retire one day. And so as much as we are going to be sad that they are not going to be there anymore, it is super exciting, you know, to envision Mark just hanging out, not waiting on us.
Awesome. I agree with Councilmember Fulter. I'm looking forward to retirement. I have ways to go, but I am counting down the seconds. But I want to echo my colleagues in great appreciation for all of the wonderful businesses in our community. And we are so sad to see so many mainstays in our community go, but it creates these opportunities. And so I like Richardson School of Music and I want to encourage members of the community to remember to support the businesses in our community, throughout our community, who invest so much of their time, their talent, their treasure into us as a community. So really want to encourage folks to patron the businesses in the city of Tacoma Park so that they too, the next generation of business owners can have the ability to say that they were in Tacoma Park for 30 to 50 years. So, again, thank you so much to Mark's Kitchen, Kinetic Artistry, and Tacoma Framers for all that you've done for our community. I will be attending Kindness Day in honor of Tommy Raskin, and that will be on Saturday at Piney Branch Elementary, starting at 10:00 AM. So definitely look forward to seeing people at that event. I will also be attending the Ward Three Public Safety Community Meeting that will be happening tomorrow that Councilmember Gibson mentioned. And then also had an opportunity, along with Councilmember Gibson and Dibala, to attend the Montgomery Chapter of the Maryland Municipal League Meeting in which our county executive provided municipal leaders with an overview of his priorities, as well as providing us with an update regarding where our balances are as it pertains to tax duplication. And the city of Tacoma Park, we might have found, well, county staff may have found an error in our calculation which might benefit us. And so I definitely, more, yes. Don't get too excited, but it is in the positive direction. But I do appreciate the fact that County Exec Mark Elrich came out and walked through priorities, which in many cases aligned with the goals that we have as a city with, in creating an environment that is ripe for development, particularly affordable housing creation, has been communicated as a priority, which is definitely a priority for us as well. And so I think, the other thing that I do just want to, again, thank all of the folks who came out to provide comments tonight. We really appreciate all of your feedback on all of the topics. It helps us with understanding different topics more, but also enables us to... It helps us with understanding different topics more, but also enables us to really think through some of the suggestions that are provided. So want to thank those that came out tonight to talk about climate change issues, the budget, and the like, because this is a great way for us to hear from you about the topics that matter, but also the direction that you would like to see our city head in. So I appreciate everyone taking time to come out tonight to provide comments. And that is all I have. And with that, I will turn things over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I just have a few items this evening for you. The first item, I know some council members may have been receiving some questions around our vaccine policy, and I want to say that our COVID-19 vaccine policy remains in effect, including for our volunteer, our volunteer policy, as well as our direction of suggesting masks. It's not mandated, just strongly encouraged. And our goal is going to continue to be to protect the safety, health, and well-being of not only our staff, but also visitors that come into our facilities. And our staff is going to continue to monitor the situation and connecting with other CAG member jurisdictions as well, similar to what we did this morning. We just did a quick check in the area to see if anyone was rescinding their policies or making some changes. And the answer is no, there's no changes in other jurisdictions as well. So we're going to continue to keep monitoring that situation and seeing what others do. The second item I have before you tonight is, I know it's shared previously, but the collaborative strategies agreement that the previous council, the council resolution and followed 2022 is currently being worked on. And so over the next several weeks, we should have that contract in place. Third item I have is the new city website. I know there's questions around the new city website. We're on track, as we stated previously, about rolling that out in the spring. Staff is working tremendously hard on the migration of a lot of the material to move over into the new website. And we're so excited, looking forward to rolling that out and having some testers of council and members in the community to play with it and get the functionality right for us before we roll it out. So we're very excited about that. And last item, I just want to say to city staff that we see you. We thank you for your hard work that you do day in, day out, and we appreciate everything that you do, not only for this organization, not only for our department, but for the community. So thank you. With that, Madam Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Great, thank you. Adoption of minutes. So with any luck, you may be able to adopt the December 7th minutes tonight. I sent out an amended version this afternoon showing the changes. So if they're satisfactory to you, I would ask that you adopt them.
Can I get a motion to adopt?
Still move.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions regarding the minutes?
Councilmember Swall.
I just wanted to make sure that Jesse, as clerk, got a on record, warm, fuzzy for the changes and how nuanced they are in making sure that there will be accountability from the state actors in the future. I just really appreciated how they were done.
Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments? All right. All those in favor of moving forward the minutes from December the 7th, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Great. The minutes from December the 7th will move forward as amended. Okay. And with that, I will turn things over to our city manager, who will walk us through the series of presentations that we will have this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And the first item we have this evening is the Minor Master Plan. And is our acting planning manager is going to introduce the county?
Good evening. My name is Alex Friedman. I'm the acting planning manager for the city, and I'm here just to tee up the larger presentation. But I wanted to start, especially since we have a lot of new members of the council now, with a bit of context as to why I'm not giving this presentation, instead we have folks from the county doing so. The city of Tacoma Park does not manage its own zoning authority. The Maryland National Capital Parks and Planning Commission, or MNCPCC, manages that. And so when this process all got started, it was kickstarted by MNCPCC, but in close partnership with the city. So we, as a staff here, work very closely with the Minor Master Plan Team from Montgomery Planning, and that is the team that I'm excited to introduce to you tonight. So to start, I would like to introduce Elza Heisel McCoy. He is the Down County Division Chief for Montgomery Planning, and he will introduce the rest of the team.
Thank you, Alex. Good evening, Mayor and city council and excellent city staff. My name is Elza Heisel McCoy. I'm a Ward One resident and chief of the Down County Planning Team. And I wanted to, just sort of before I introduce the team, just give a brief rundown of what we do, do. We, our department or our division within the planning department reviews all development applications for the area of the county inside the Capitol Beltway, and we do all master planning for areas inside the Capitol Beltway. And so I'm available, as is the team, to always answer any questions. We thank you very much for having us. Here tonight, we have Larissa Cleven, who supervises our master plan team, and then we have Melissa Williams, who will be giving the presentation tonight.
Okay. So once again, my name is Melissa Williams, and thank you for having me. I'm the project lead for the Tacoma Park Minor Master Plan Amendment. And as stated previously, this is an effort done in partnership with the city of Tacoma Park. So on the agenda for tonight, there are a few questions that we will answer. So that's what is a master plan? How is the city of Tacoma Park participating? What questions will the plan answer? What area will be impacted? We'll talk about existing conditions in that area today, what we heard from the community, and also explain what the next steps are. So a master plan, a master plan or an area master plan or sector plan, these are long-term planning documents. They provide detailed and specific land use and zoning recommendations for a specific place or geography of the county. They also address transportation, the natural environment, urban design, historic resources, public facilities, and implementation techniques. All master plans are amendments to the general plan. Additionally, in this particular plan, there's a separate but tandem process for the evaluation of historic resources within the planned area. So this is just going to explain quickly the partnership. So there was an MOU between the city of Tacoma Park and the planning department for this particular planning effort. Montgomery County is the lead agency in the administration, engagement, development, quality assurance, and production of all deliverables for the plan through all phases of the planning process. The city of Tacoma Park is responsible for assisting us with engagement, data collection, and assistance with the development of recommendations, very specific recommendations, those that deal with economic development, housing, and potential school sites. And they're also going to assist with the planning related to the environment, specifically that of the city's tree ordinance and stormwater management authorities. So there are a host of other people or other groups of people that are considered planned partners. Those are your multifamily property owners, your affordable housing providers, major employers and institutions, other county government agencies, and also the residents of this planned area. So that would be your stakeholders, I'm sorry, that would be your civic groups and HOAs, and even those persons that are not represented by a civic or an HOA or other neighborhood group. So thinking about the questions that the plan will answer, this will be accomplished by utilizing the information received from the stakeholders. That would be your residents, property owners, the city, and other representative parties during the engagement process. So those questions are essentially, what is the future of the Washington Adventist Campus and surrounding area? And that would include the Erie Center. It's also, what is the future of Maple Avenue and surrounding area? And in that instance, that includes a small portion of Lee Avenue, but also the municipal area, the place where we're sitting in right now. And then we're also looking to see, how can this plan enhance the livability of everything within the planned area? And the goal is to provide implementable expectations that can be realized via this process. So quickly, let's take a look at the boundary. So everything that you see within that hashed mark, that represents the boundary for this plan. So this is going to be an update to the 2000 Tacoma Park Master Plan, and this was approved by the planning board. The scope of the plan and the boundary was approved by the planning board on September 30th of 2021. So it's important to note that within this planned area, we have the Washington Adventist Campus, including the hospital and the university. We also have the Erie Center, which is a small retail node located at Flower and Erie Avenue. We also have this densely populated area along Maple Avenue, where you have a lot of your multifamily residential, but it also includes the Tacoma Park Community Center and the library, also known as the Sam Abbott Citizen Center. We also have Piney Branch Elementary School. And then we have some parkland. We have the Tacoma Park, Tacoma Piney Branch Local Park. We have a large portion of the Sligo Creek Park, and then we also have the Opal A. Daniels Park. And then we also have the Tacoma Park Public Works Buildings on Ritchie Avenue. So one thing that I wanted to reiterate is that the planned recommendations are typically limited to areas inside this approved boundary. So that's specifically what we're going to be focusing on for this master planning effort. So let's talk about the existing conditions. Our team comprised of a variety of different professionals that specialize in different areas, actually took a long, hard look at what's on the ground today. And so we use that to actually inform the process. So we acknowledge that there is an ethnically diverse population with an age range that is not dissimilar from the overall county. There are also a number of potentially historically significant structures. These are located primarily on the Washington Adventist Campus. We also have limited retail. That retail is isolated at the Erie Center, and then there's a small amount of retail that's located right here on Maple Avenue. What we saw was that while there are tremendous amounts of transit opportunities around the area, as you start to look at Maple Avenue and the Washington Adventist Campus, you note that the transit access becomes limited. There are also a significant number of environmental constraints. That's something that the plan will address as well. And also, there's a densely populated area, and so that we have a mix of apartments and condos. And so these, once again, were the key takeaways from our existing conditions process, and we'll use this to craft our planned recommendations. So this serves as kind of the basis of where we get started. So in order to supplement that, we also have a robust community engagement process. So this information that I'm sharing now represents all of the work that we did up until 2022. We're actually in another phase of engagement right now. But speaking and listening to the community, they're crucial to a successful planning effort. The team reached out to the community for more than a year. We used a variety of methods, including attending scheduled ward meetings. We spoke with civics and other neighborhood groups. We were invited to participate in some of their meetings. We also worked with a consultant. That consultant helped us do, helped us with a neighborhood canvassing effort. That effort included knocking on doors, firing, and actually having one-on-one interviews with the residents of those multifamily units along Maple and Lee Avenue. So that was key for us, and that was something that proved very successful. And these interviews were conducted in a variety of different languages, and we ended up providing materials in French, Spanish, and Amharic, and in English as well. And so these results were collected and used to inform subsequent planning activities, such as the visioning open house that took place in the fall. So this open house was held at the Piney Branch Elementary School. It was open to the public. We had more than 100 participants. And we had boards and exhibits that explained the planning terminology and also provided opportunities for additional feedback. We wanted the people that attended this to feel that not only were they a part of the conversation, but we also wanted to be able to focus the energy on things that could actually be addressed in a master plan. We utilized key takeaways that we got from our previous engagement efforts as an organizing method, and it allowed attendees to see themselves in and to recognize their contributions to this discussion. And so let's talk about these key takeaways. What we heard, by and large, were that residents like, actually loved living in Tacoma Park, but there was a desire for more affordability. So, you know, they were looking at the Washington Adventist Campus as an opportunity to provide different types of affordability and different types of housing. With that being said, there was tremendous concern about the loss of the hospital and the desire for some sort of medical facility, be it urgent care or health clinic, to remain on that campus. They also wanted to see additional walkable retail options. Once again, the campus seemed to be the place where everyone thought, you know, if something could happen, that's where it should be located. And then there was concern about the Sligo Creek Stream Valley Park, that it's an important asset, and they were concerned that, well, they wanted to express concern that it continued to be protected. And then finally, the desire for additional public amenities. Once again, looking at the campus, the idea for outdoor and indoor recreation, a fitness center, and potentially to have the swimming pool relocated there. And so we heard a lot about the swimming pool at the elementary school, so I think it's important to note that. And so this is our planned timeline. So this slide is essentially a visual representation of the timeline for the plan, and it also highlights key moments for the community, the city council, and also for the county. So if you see that green arrow, that's where we are right now. So we are firmly in this visioning phase. We're actually wrapping up all of the engagement that we've gotten so far, and we're starting to digest that and to take that in conjunction with the existing conditions work that we have, and to start to dream about the possibilities. But let's take a moment to review the entire timeline. We're going to be crafting preliminary recommendations with the goal of having a working draft completed by spring. This doesn't mean that we are done working with planned stakeholders, such as yourself and the community. We're going to return to the city council with our draft recommendations, and at that point, we would review those with you, and we would ask for a resolution of support. And that would actually move us into, I'm sorry, that would actually move us towards our working draft. And that's unfortunate, I'm sorry, I misspoke. We're going to come back to you with our preliminary recommendations, and then we will come back to you with our working draft, and that's where we would ask for the resolution. And moving from that, we would go into a planning board session, and that will be held, and staff will ask for approval of the working draft from the planning board in order to set a public hearing. And so that becomes a greater opportunity for people to participate, and that's an opportunity for stakeholders to provide public testimony, and that would be the city council or the mayor could provide testimony there as well. And we would also have an opportunity for property owners and other interested parties to get on the official public record. And this phase includes opportunities for plan refinement, because we would move from the public hearing into work sessions. And that's essentially where we would start to look at this working draft. We would take in additional information, and we would begin to highlight the things that kind of rise to the top. And we would work out any areas that needed additional contribution by stakeholders, additional contribution by staff, and we would refine that document, ultimately producing something that we called a planning board draft. And so that planning board draft, once again, you see that red star, that planning board draft is another document where we would bring that to you, and we would ask for a resolution of support of that document. And so then, that resolution and that document is then sent up to the county council, and we have this process that starts all over again, where we have a public hearing and we have public testimony. And then it's up to the council to continue to refine that document and ultimately provide approval and adoption of this whole thing, which we hope would happen by the end of the year. So we're looking at fall of 2023 for an approved and adopted master plan. And then there is another component where we have a sectional map amendment, which, that is what changes the zoning on the property. So that's kind of, it's a lot of information. We actually do have this. We actually do have this broken out in a way that we can give to you so that you could, you could follow it, you could follow along with us. So I do have something that I can share with you if you want more information on that process. But I really wanted to kind of walk you through it so that you would have a better idea of when we would come back to you. So you see those, those areas where we had the red stars, which are the key moments that will come back. But because we're working with your staff, there is always that line of communication there. Um, we are always available for questions, um, or comments if you want to speak with us. And for those of you that represent, um, have board meetings, if you're interested in having us come out and speak to your, your community or your constituency, we're available to do that as well. And that actually, um, concludes the presentation. I do have my contact information here. For those of you who may be watching at home, um, that is my direct phone number. That's the email address for the plan. And if you are not signed up, there is an e-letter for the plan where you can actually get information, um, in a timely fashion, and you can also check out our website. And so that completes my very brief presentation, which was about process and giving you kind of just the, the high-level bits and pieces of what a master plan is and where we are in that process.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Melissa. I really appreciate, um, your run-through. It's really helpful. Um, and also just appreciate how much work the entire team has put into engaging our community over the last year or so. And you're, and when you say you're willing to meet with people, you all, you mean it. You've been meeting with so many different residents and groups about this, uh, this plan, and, and that just shows the commitment that you all have to making sure that we're able to turn this into something that is definitely workable for this community. So I really want to thank you, um, Elsa, for all of, all of the folks that have been working on this so far. I know it's, it's been a lot of work. So with that, I will, um, turn things over. Councilmember Small has a question.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I, I had a question about, this is so ridiculous. My question is about, first of all, I wanted to say that I thought that the presentation was very well done, and, um, I appreciate the outline of, uh, the circumstances, uh, the distinctions between the county-to-county aspects of, uh, park and planning, as I would shorthand it, um, have been interesting to me. And there are, it, it seems to me like there may be a little bit more of a political component to the Montgomery County side than the other side, but that's neither here nor there. My question is about where the potential zoning implications of anyone potentially interested in developing at the Advent site are? And where, in the context of the grandfatherings and/or, um, transit-oriented development due to the proximity of the purple line as it currently intends to be existing, if there are any things that, uh, would control through the process in case someone has or gets a wild hair that they really are interested in developing? Because the, the planning process being what it is, the changing of the zoning being one thing versus the opportunity that may present themselves in any sort of markets or with infrastructure dollars coming from the feds or the state governments.
Do you want me to?
I'm happy to. So thanks for the question. So as I'm sure you're all aware, the Adventist Health, uh, the Adventist Campus writ large is zoned for single-family homes today. That's all you can do. Everything that's there is by sort of a special agreement. So I think one of the things, so as Melissa said, the, the plan looks at land use, zoning, urban designers, historic preservation, uh, environmental issues, transportation, if I didn't say that already. And I think for, for this planned area, I think one of the themes that we've been working on, I really started talking with the city about this before the pandemic, is flexibility. And so I think we, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty. You know, we're in a very different place now than we were when we first started talking with the city about this plan. And so I think we are keeping that in mind so that the, the recommendations that we make are as open and as flexible as possible. We understand that what might not work now might work in two years, and the other way around. So I think we're, we're very focused on that. Um, it, you know, it's not just the numbers game, it's also a quality-of-life game. Uh, it's, you know, it's about how are these improvements brought about? I mean, really, sector plans work generally in two ways. There's private development that pays for things, or there's public dollars that pay for things. And the plan has to address both, and, you know, it, it, we do plans all over down county. You know, this is the first one that I've done in a municipality, and so we have to think about what that means for the public side.
Thank you. I guess, I had one more. Um, I just, I did want to say that, uh, uh, councilmember, uh, Randy and I, um, had a wonderful conversation with your staff in the advance of the meeting happening, and it was really good to talk about some policy implications and directions moving forward. I think, um, one of the other questions that I had, you kind of alluded to, um, and I do not intend for this to be salacious. However, when you start talking about the sector plans and planning, um, as they relate to the master plan and those kinds of things, um, there is always sort of a lag or perceived lag between what the planning documents say and whether or not the dollars flow into certain areas. And so I'm curious about whether or not you feel like the planning documents in this area are going to be effective in inducing people to develop within the town? And if they are, what things about the changes, uh, will make that possible? And my question is related to the fact that there, there have been, um, New Hampshire Avenue or down, um, we've got issues with regard to the floodplain on Maple and lots of other things. And I think sometimes people misunderstand the Sligo Creek area as, uh, some material benefit of environmental wonder when it really is just the place where you can't structurally build. Um, and so there are some things about the way we've come to be that I think it flips around when you start thinking about those things. And so I'm curious about where the opportunity fills in in this process in your mind. Does that make sense? That makes sense, right?
Okay. So that was a lot, but I'm going to try and, and fill in where, where I think you were, where I think you were going with the question. So that campus, the Washington Adventist Campus is roughly 40 acres. And so right now, we know that roughly half of it is actually the hospital. Um, and you know, we did have that conversation about flatland and the ability to build. So we know that we have that hos, the hospital campus there, and based on the conversations, and that's something that I'm not, that I wasn't sure if I mentioned in the conversation, maybe Elsa did, but we do have regular conversations with the Washington Adventist Group. And so the City of Tacoma Park staff are involved in those conversations as well. And so we know that they have a desire to redevelop the campus, and they're treating, um, this entire 40 acres as kind of one opportunity. And so we're looking at this from the standpoint of there is an active university there that, um, one thought is that the university should grow and strengthen and become a much more attractive, um, institution. And that should be supported by development that, the potential for development on this, um, this hospital campus that we also understand will likely need a lot of remediation. So, so we have, you know, getting into the idea of public dollars and private dollars. So the, the reality is that we're probably talking about, oh, everyone's going to have to chip in. This is not going to be kind of a straight private development, and it probably won't be a straight public development. So it's about strengthening the partnerships and getting to Elsa's point about providing that flexibility. That's the, that's kind of that line, that tightrope that this planning effort has to walk, is that because this is an expensive endeavor, and there are a lot of opportunities for all of the stakeholders. Everyone kind of sees themselves in this campus, and they think about what the future of this campus could be. We have to make sure that there is flexibility so that everyone can, um, potentially get some of the things that they need, um, to happen. And so we're really like, we're not at the stage where we have land use and zoning recommendations. We are continuing to have these, you know, really intense conversations, not just with the property owner, but also with the community surrounding it, because we also have to be cognizant of the impact of development on this kind of, you know, existing single-family neighborhood. And then we also are cognizant of the things that the county as a stakeholder would like to see happen, and also the things that the city would, would need to have happen as well. So, um, saying all of that to say, flexibility in this particular, um, instance is going to be kind of the name of the game. I actually, this is my third plan that I've actually done, where I've had to work with the City of Tacoma Park. And I will say that in those plans, we were actually able to be a little more prescriptive because we had a clear understanding about the future of the parcels that were, um, development opportunities. This one is the first time that I've ever actually dealt with, um, a plan where we were actually dealing with an institution that was, that's the size of Washington Adventist. So I think there are a lot of unknowns. Um, I, I think it's probably safe to say, as Elsa mentioned, that the conversations that were held before COVID are no longer relevant in many instances. So we're learning as we go. But I think, um, to your point, Councilman Small, the university wants to see, I'm sorry, the Washington Adventist Group wants and needs to see a successful development in order to kind of move their vision along for the future of that campus and the future of that, that vacant hospital parcel. So I think we're all invested in making sure that that happens, and, and we get something that's attractive and complimentary, um, to the City of Tacoma Park.
Thank you. That was a wonderful answer.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes, uh, well, thank you. Actually, that, that was going to be my question, because I think the big player here is, is the Washington Adventist. And, and I don't think you mentioned it, but they, they obviously have a huge say in, in what's happening. So I appreciate, as much as you, you've been able to share, can share about that, because they have, they, they will have a huge influence. And, uh, it is exciting to hear that they're interested in development, but that can mean a lot of, a lot of things. So I'll anxiously follow that. I did go to your open house, uh, next door in the, uh, in the school, and I found it very, uh, exciting and interesting and informative as well. So I appreciate the, the, actually, a lot of work that went into that presentation. I just wondered, did you come away from that open house with any big surprises?
Um, I think we did. I, I think we, we, we came away with it, um, we, we learned some more about the history of the area. So that was incredibly helpful to talk to people who have actually lived in the area and remember a lot about how the hospital and the university function, you know, 40, 50 years ago. So that was incredibly useful. We also got a lot of really cool ideas, um, from people that attended in terms of, you know, we encourage people to envision a new Maple Avenue, to envision, um, a new Washington Adventist Campus. And, you know, once people were given the capacity to dream, and they were given a marker, and they were able to start writing, people really came away with some really cool ideas. Um, you know, a lot of that, when you, you dream big, you also have to be able to package it in a way that's, you know, that can be implemented and things that are doable. And that's kind of where we are right now. We're taking all of those grand ideas, which included, you know, greenways and pathways and boulevards and, you know, connections and transit and bike lanes and, and swimming pools and, you know, co-located facilities. People wanted to, you know, schools and rec centers together. So we've got all of these, these great ideas, and many of them are founded in how people use the community today and how they'd like to use it in the future. And so that's what I, along with other members of the team, are essentially looking through those, and we're trying to find commonalities, and we're trying to find ways where some of these things could happen. Um, and if they can't happen today, we lay the foundation by being incredibly flexible for them to happen in the future.
Councilmember Honsak?
Thank you so much, Ms. Williams. Um, I, I live in, uh, Ward Five, just for full disclosure. I mean, you know that, but that's, you know, it includes the hospital campus. So there are lots of questions from the folks that are living in and around my neighborhood, and, and me included. And again, I just want to thank you for a fantastic presentation. Um, if, if you will allow me, I have about three big buckets of questions. Um, my, my first one, uh, comes kind of from what we were just talking about, is the, the extent to which you've been talking to the Adventist Group. It sounds like you're in regular contact with them. When I attended the, uh, the, I guess it was called a community meeting that they held right after the visioning workshops, which I, were you on that as well, or somebody from your group?
Um, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I was just curious. So that, that, um, my, my takeaway from that meeting was that they really just had kind of two big visions so far themselves from their engineering group or planning group that they had, um, commissioned. And frankly speaking, they weren't that, uh, different in my, in my viewpoint. They were pretty similar to one another, and I guess I'm, I'm just a little troubled by the statement flexibility is the name of the game. Um, I get it on one hand, but on the other hand, I'm really concerned that we are creating these grand, um, ideas and big visions at the county and the city level and expectations even, and, and that, um, the Adventist Group is going to be making the call kind of on the final, you know, the final plan, who's going to get the land, et cetera. And I just, I, I guess my, so my question is sort of, besides the regular meetings, I mean, what, uh, what levers do we have as a city and a county to pull? Um, and what are you also, do you feel like you, you guys are able to do right now to bring them along with us as we develop these big visions? And, um, let's call them the less flexible ideas, the ones that might be more exciting but a little bit less interesting to them at the moment. They've got two big towers, and that's what both of their plans show, and they haven't elaborated on whether they're going to include retail. They have a history of not giving community space, and I, I'm not holding anything against them. They're a small university. But I, I am really concerned that, that it might be hard to get what we really want. So I got, yeah, so that's my question. That's my first bucket of questions. That's the hardest one. Yeah, thanks.
Elsa, you want to jump in? Or you want me to?
So it, so there is, there's a lever, but we don't, you know, sort of the, the length of the lever, you know, it gets longer and shorter depending on what the market is doing. And so, you know, there's 40 acres. Forty acres in Down County inside the Beltway is a rare thing. And so there has to be enough incentive for them to go through the process, take the time, spend the money to redevelop. As I said before, the, the sector plans get, uh, let's just call them improvements, either through private dollars or public dollars. We all appreciate public dollars are limited. There's certainly a role, but it's, you know, and, and somewhere, you know, we just did a plan in downtown Silver Spring. Five years ago, we did a plan in downtown Bethesda, and the development pressure there is so strong, your lever gets very long, and you can ask for a lot, because they're making so much money that you can get things that you can't get where the development pressure is not as strong. Tacoma Park is a very desirable place. You know, the purple line is coming through Long Branch. So there, you know, the metro is, you know, the other direction, so there's a lot, there's a lot here. So it's a balancing act. It's harder in a plan like this. It's harder to, so you have to do this, that, and the other. It's more about if, if you do A, B, C, D, then maybe you can get X, Y, Z. And so it's more, it's, it's a bit of a dance. Um, and as Melissa described, in the, the process, there's the planning component, which is the planning staff and the planning board, and then there's the political component, which is always the county council, but here also the city council. And so it is, you know, we're going to do our best to figure out a way, and this is sort of to council, uh, member Small's question, to, to try and make as many opportunities as we can. But there's a timeline for development. It takes a while to get It takes a while to get the plans together, to get the financing for the plans, to go through the entitlement process, then to build it. And, you know, the, the economy comes and goes and things make money and then they don't make money and then they make money again. And so I, I think those are all the things that we're trying to, and the plan, and we're going to be looking to you all to take, you know, to bring your expertise with city government to how can, you know, what insights do you have to help this process? How can we, you know, get some of the things we're talking about? But it's really a balancing act. It's not a great answer, but that it's.
Well, and, and that's great. I, I think, I think it'll be helpful again for me as a newer city council member too to understand the carrots and sticks, if you will. But, but I, I guess, you know, there are things that don't make as much money for anybody, really. They take money like, like a pool that would be open to the community that is probably not a moneymaker, a community space, probably not a moneymaker usually if it's for local community stuff. So I'd love to hear a little more, maybe, maybe in the report, you know, about some of those, if that's part of the report process. Anyway, but thank you, thank you for that explanation. So my, my second question is a little bit of a toughie, but hopefully an easier answer. I was just wondering if you could update us. I remember at the last, the last time that there was a, a report out, I think at the city council and then the Visioning Workshop, I had some questions, as does many, many of my fellow residents. I thought y'all did an amazing job of surveying, you know, Maple Avenue, multi-language, including Essex House, which was, you know, is in our ward. But it was a lot harder, frankly, to get up just on the boundary of the, of the planning area into some of the, not only the single-family houses that are in the plan itself, which are definitely relevant, but just extending upwards to the sort of, will I say, the southern and the central part of what is Ward Five. I hope that means something to you. I think, assume it does. Have you been able to do any follow-up efforts? And if not, is there something that I can do to facilitate that process? And it doesn't, we don't have to have that full conversation right now. I just wanted to put a placeholder.
Okay. So we are in fact, we, we've just kind of crafted the engagement process for the next phase of work that we're going to be doing. And that's the preliminary recommendations. And so we've actually talked with city staff about flyering. That was something that we found some success with. You know, as I stated before, we are available and hopeful that we can actually meet with existing civics and HOAs and neighborhood groups. So anyone, you know, any of the council persons that have that contact that would love to invite us to one of your meetings, we're open for that. If you're listening at home and you represent an HOA or a neighborhood group or a civic, definitely reach out to me and I can come and do a presentation to you on the plan. And if you time it right, we actually may be at the point where we've released the preliminary recommendations and we can actually have someone come and walk, walk you through the preliminary recommendations and what that means to the overall plan area and how it might impact, you know, the specific neighborhoods. So.
And just the, the one thing I would add, as Melissa showed in the process, this is a marathon.
Yeah.
It, it's really sort of several marathons and it is, it's important for anybody interested in the plan to pace themselves. And so I think the, the, can you bring up the, the slide that showed? So as, as Melissa said, there are going to be opportunities. So the purple boxes for public testimony, there's a public hearing at the planning board, there's a public hearing, a public hearing at the county council. Those are critical. So it, it's very important to be involved early, but the planning board can make any changes. So the, the planning board can make any changes they want.
Yes.
So the plan that goes to council is the planning board's plan. So we, you know, we work, we work collaboratively. You know, we want the city council to feel positive about the plan, to give us a resolution that says we support, but you don't have to support.
Exactly.
Right? And, and the same thing, when it goes to the county council, those are key, the council can change anything they want. So it's important to connect with Melissa and her team now. As she said, we're going to be coming out with our preliminary recommendations, which we're going to present to the community and then we're going to present to the city council and then we're going to present to the planning board probably in the next couple of months.
Yes.
So that would be a great time to, 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 to reach out. But hitting these two purple boxes will be very important for residents.
Thanks. So just to be clear, it's, it's not easy for you, nor is it for us to figure out how to reach our community. Flyering might be great. We, we don't have the associations that you're speaking of, and that is why it has been so difficult, I'm sure, for even to figure that out. And then my last question, I hope is pretty simple. I wonder if there's a, something that can give me, I, I have so many people coming at me who live right, literally right around, in a circle around the campus saying, so what is the timeline again? And so this is really helpful, like for me to be able to say something like fall 2023 is when they're hoping, you know, aiming for having an approved adopted master plan. But just getting a, a big picture sense of, and then it usually takes, you know, a couple of years to hit X, you know, next, next step. And, you know, again, it could be two to five years, but I've, I've just been ballparking it going, well, it might take another eight years. You know, I mean, I really have no idea. So an answer for those people would be very helpful or a visual. And I know, I know it's, it's like a shot in the dark, but, you know, based on your experience, just, just a few, a few of the key big things that need to happen in some sense of, you know, from, from your wisdom.
In terms of the process, these steps are defined by law.
Yeah.
So master plans are a comprehensive review and they have to follow these steps. What happens after the plan is approved could happen in a month. It could happen in a year. It could happen in five years. It could happen in three months. It's just, it, it's really, it, it, we would not be able to honestly give anybody any assurance that anything that's recommended in this plan is going to happen. Melissa worked on the.
Tacoma Langley Crossroads, the Taco Bell moved.
Those plans were predicated on the purple line.
Yes.
And when we were doing them, the purple line was coming and it was coming fast. We got to get, you know, we got to get moving. And then, you know, here we are 10 years later.
Yeah.
And there's no purple line. So we can't, we, we tell residents, we can't make promises. We would love to tell you, this is all going to be built in five years. We would love to tell you that there's going to be your favorite restaurant shop on the corner. We just don't, we, we don't know. We can encourage, but we'd be dishonest if we were saying, yeah, this will happen in five years.
Yeah, we, I, I would say it's important to note that when we think about these plans, we're thinking 15, 20-year timeline. So that's the horizon for the plan. So even as we're talking about like the need for flexibility, it's because that's a generation. Technology changes, people change, you know, no one could have anticipated the pandemic. And so that's not in our plans, but because the plans are 15 to 20 years, there's enough time for things like to have that, that shock to the system and then things could catch up and that plan is still relevant. And so, you know, it's, it's tough to give assurances, but, you know, we, we tell people that's why, think about it from what would you like to see 10 years from now? And because that's probably going to be a more realistic approach. But, you know, stranger things have happened, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Small, is that a follow-up to that point? Otherwise, Councilmember Fulter has her light on and has been on.
I would defer. Well, it's sort of a follow-up. My question is about, like, you, you kind of said the quiet part loud at the end of what you just said about the opportunities for other political actors to affect the process. And so I guess I'm curious about what the political economy of weighting those actors versus the residents versus the city and those kinds of things are. Is that a calculation that you guys do or something else? Because it would seem like, you know, like not, not to be, not to hide the ball, but like there, there are lots of intellectual and cultural heavyweights of state and county importance that live in Tacoma Park. And so it would seem to me at least theoretically possible that there may be a squeaky wheel or something else. And so I'm just curious about how all those things come together. And do you anticipate a lot of any efforts in the context of all of these things as opposed to just people talking to you?
So everybody, everybody who lives in the plan area, everybody who has an opinion about the plan area is, you know, they're an invested party. We have a public process that we are now in that ends, that comes through this political body, comes through the appointed planning board, ends with the county council. So anybody, everybody will talk to you, talk to county council members. They can even, because they're not regulatory, there's no development application, they can even talk to planning board members. So it is, while this game is on, it's absolutely, in the end, it's a political process. And so there's, you know, best professional judgment, we make recommendations. After the plan is approved and adopted, the development process is not overtly political. So the county council doesn't have a role in reviewing development applications. The city council, maybe whether you like it or not, you have a role in addressing development applications within the city. But the planning board is, I can't say now that they're not political, but I mean, you know, they're, they're appointed. They're not elected officials. So that is a public process. And, you know, I think it is, it takes a lot, it takes a lot for development projects to come together. And the lot is everything from financial support, community support, excellent design, political support, all these things to, to happen. But right now, we're in, we're in a public process that ends with a political answer.
Excellent. I just wanted to make sure that we all noted the quiet part being loud and vice versa because everybody should get a chance to speak.
Councilmember Fulter?
So first of all, I, I, like, looking at the map, I can see that the, the minor master plan boundary very much includes mostly multifamily homes and parks. And so like, what's the reasoning behind that?
So when the conversation started in the, you know, in a parking lot at the Washington Adventist University 2019, maybe, I think there, you know, the, the, at, at that time, the Washington Adventist Hospital is closing, things are happening, it's zoned for single-family, there's concern about what's happening there. That obviously changed during the pandemic. But, but the idea is that we're going to talk about the Adventist campus. Maple Avenue is very unique in at least Down County. I'm most familiar with Down County in that you have high-density multifamily housing with a very diverse population and it's all, it's not, it, it's all affordable relative to Montgomery County. That's very rare. And so, you know, I think there are potentially some opportunities to create more housing on Maple Avenue. I think, you know, when we look at it and talk to residents, there's even more of an opportunity to, you know, just improve, you know, open space and, you know, being able to safely get around on Maple Avenue. So I think, you know, we, this is a minor master plan amendment. We're not revisiting the entire Tacoma Park master plan. And so I think in drawing the boundaries, we sort of, we have the campus on one end, we have Maple Avenue and others. And one of the things that minor master plan amendments can do is on the public side, make recommendations for parks and open space because it's public land, it's easier to recommend this, that, or the other. So I think that was, that was more or less.
Yeah. And I would, I would also add that when we typically are looking to create boundaries, we look for natural boundaries. And so that could be things like parks. So you typically see that. You also look at ownership patterns. And then finally, you look at where like things are next to like things. And so getting to Elsa's point about the existence of that kind of high-density residential on Maple Avenue, it makes sense to stop there instead of going into the single-family neighborhoods because those are completely different. And so when you're thinking about recommendations and you don't want to bleed too far into a community where you know that you're not really going to make a substantive change because that tends to get people excited and in some, sometimes upset and knowing that we're not really looking to make changes in that area. So this kind of gets back to the original point of the boundary is drawn in a way because those are the places where recommendations are most likely to happen. And so you tend to draw a tighter boundary in using the, the land use changes, the ownership patterns and the natural boundaries like parks and, and, and streets in many cases. So hopefully that, that answers your question.
Yeah. I mean, oof, but okay. And then I guess, you know, second of all, I just have to say, like, you know, the, the hospital leaving was like a loss of jobs and it was a loss of having a hospital in our community. And so it's, it's hard, it, it's a hard reality that, that, that they get so much say over what the community now is getting in return for us, you know, as a council, like supported them leaving, supported them going down to urgent care and like also the urgent care leaving. And so I'm just hoping that they will give back to the community that let them make the decision to, to leave it.
I mean, again, I, you know, I, I'll reiterate that the city council and then ultimately the county council will be drafting the language that says, so there's zoning changes on the Washington Adventist site, but then there, there's a bunch of language that talks about goals and expectations and vision for that site. Not necessarily, you know, where the sub shop goes, but how does it relate to the surrounding community? How does it relate to Long Branch? How does it relate to the single-family neighborhoods across Carroll, across Flower? So there is, even though they're the property owner and at the end of the day, if they don't want to develop, we can't force them to, to redevelop, there's, there's a lot of room between here and there. And, and we look forward to getting the council's recommendations to make that better.
And I do want to go back to Councilmember Fulter's first question around the boundaries. Just so that my colleagues know, that was also a bit of an iterative process with the council as well. Just so that folks are familiar, there are other areas of the boundary that are covered by other sector plans. So as a result, it looks kind of jagged, but it's, in some cases, they may be covered by the Long Branch Sector Plan. And then you may have other aspects of the sector plan. And so as we were learning more about what you all were proposing, you know, the council made recommendations, like, yes, let's include Erie Ave. That makes sense for us to do. Or let's make sure that we're covering certain, certain parks and certain, certain multifamily buildings. And I learned as part of the, the, the information session that you all had, quite a few of our multifamily buildings were zoned under this weird old zoning code, which needed to be rezoned anyway. So it, it really was a little bit more of a, a iterative process between council staff and, and with the county staff as well in terms of identifying where the needs were in terms of the boundary than I think maybe people might realize. There were a number of meetings about that. Councilmember Hanzak?
I, I just wanted to follow up because I'll be honest, I'm just a little bit troubled about hearing about how the boundaries were drawn right around the Erie Ave area and maybe even a little bit on the Greenwood. I, and maybe, maybe it's just something I need to learn a bit more about. But if I look at the, the boundaries, that's one of the few areas where I am keenly aware of exactly whose houses are drawn in there and whose are not. I don't know whether that was intentional or whether it actually follows some, like you said, natural boundary, but it does trouble me. I will, I'll be honest with you and I want to say this on the dais versus say in the back of the room here. I have had two people already say to me, they are so nervous about what you guys are going to decide, that they're selling their house in the next year or two. And they live inside that boundary. And I have some others that are like, should I? Should I sell sooner than later? So I don't, you know, it's just something we should really keep in mind, I think, because I don't think there are a lot of single-family houses that have been included there, but right there, you've got several. So anyway, we can talk off, offline, but please bear that in mind. I'd love to hear, if, if there's anything to say about that, maybe, maybe it does follow a natural zoning boundary, for example. Thanks.
I mean, I, so I think, you know, Erie Avenue is a, the, the shops there at Erie and Flower are unique on Flower. It's sort of, you know, it's the only retail really until you get down to Piney Branch. And so I think the, the city did recommend, we look at that. I think we also, when we're drawing. I think we also, when we're drawing boundaries, you know, so Greenwood, so we, we try to include properties on both sides of the street, because that's how people experience a street. And so even if there's no zoning change recommended, you're still looking at it because the, both of these people face the same street. The properties on Greenwood, there's a lot of properties owned by Washington Adventist University, so those were included. The properties on, I can never remember the name of the street that, that
Maplewood?
That, that comes, that intersects Flower there at the campus.
Maple.
Is it Maplewood?
Maplewood.
You got it, good job.
Yeah.
You know, tho- those are properties that are directly across the campus, some of those are zoned for multifamily use now. I think there's been some interest in subdividing those now to make the, to, to increase the density of housing there. So I, I think there are some, you know, when you look at on Lee Avenue, again, you know, we're, we're sort of covering properties on both sides of the street. So there are some sort of best practices, but just because of, sorry, just because of properties in the boundary doesn't mean it will be rezoned. But by law, only properties within the boundary can be rezoned.
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you all so much. Again, I can't say enough how appreciative I am to all of the, the time and the attention that you all have paid to, to this particular plan, and it's, it's a necessary first step. I live in the Tacoma Langley Sector Plan, so I, I can attest. I can attest that zoning plan does not necessarily equal development tomorrow. It requires a number of different things at play, a market that is ready for development, partners that are willing to invest on the private side, political will, lots of things have to, to, to come into play in order for these plans to be actually realized. But this is one of the first, when someone was asking, I think it was Councilmember Honzak was asking about a carrot, having the zoning already set in place is a big carrot. And making sure that we have all of that, all of that squared away really does create the, the right environment for helping other partners realize the potential. So thank you all so much for, for, for doing this work.
Mayor, if I may add, before we change topics, for the council members and community members who are interested, I want to point them to the city website. If you drop minor master plan into the search engine, it takes you to a page which includes previous presentations of the Montgomery Planning Team to the council on existing conditions, on the scope and boundaries discussion, you know, the whole history is there. And it links directly to the county page on this project for the latest and most current information.
I would add quickly that you can also see our presentations to the planning board as well, if you go to our page.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Sure, sure can. Okay, so it's, we're nearing 10 o'clock, and given the number of agenda items, I think we're going to go past 10. So if everyone is okay, we can take a quick five-minute break. And then we will reconvene. Thanks. All right, we're going to get back to the agenda. All right, turning things over, back over to the city manager as we prepare for our strategic plan updates.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next three items, we're going to get into our strategic plan updates, the housing and community, the housing and economic development strategic plan update. We have the housing manager and the economic development manager, and they're going to provide the updates and accomplishments. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Cowler and Mr. McNally.
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor, members of council, pleasure to be here as always. Ira Cowler, Economic Development Manager, I'm joined tonight by Devin McNally, our housing manager, we're going to tag team this presentation a little bit, jump up and down. Definitely honored to be here to present an update on our Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan on a night where you've already learned and heard so much about some of the great activities that are going on in the Housing and Economic Development topics. So I'll jump right in here, as you're aware, but just a brief overview of the Housing and Community Development Department as a whole. We have five main divisions. Our Housing Division oversees rental housing stock and compliance with city laws, including rent stabilization, while also assisting city residents with financial assistance, excuse me. Our Economic Development Department supports the economic growth of the city, including the city's property tax base, with focus on real estate development and business support. Our Planning Division manages public space improvements, transportation policy, and county-level coordination around planning efforts. Code enforcement ensures private property owners and businesses adhere to city's codes and regulations. And our Arts and Humanities Division provides programming and activation of city public spaces. So tonight, we're here to give you a brief update on our 2019 to 2030 Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan. The creation of the HCD strategic plan was a multi-year process that involved staff, community members and stakeholders, and various consultants to review current housing and economic development conditions in the city Tacoma Park while creating strategies to create a livable community for all. That framework, a livable community for all, was kind of the guiding vision for this plan, and you can see here on the slide, kind of the statement that outlines what a livable community meant as a part of the development of that plan. The process of creating that plan led to the creation of several documents, not just the planning document, but also an extensive data analysis, as well as an extensive SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, looking at both housing and economic development throughout the city. So as a whole, the strategic plan outlined 17 objectives, 48 different strategies for implementation, but those were bucketed into three main buckets that we're going to kind of use as our framework here as we walk through some of our recent accomplishments and our plans for the near future. So the first bucket was to preserve existing businesses and affordable housing in Tacoma Park, including in revitalizing areas. The second bucket was to produce more housing opportunities for businesses to start and grow across the income spectrum and in neighborhoods across the city to meet the diverse housing and economic development needs. And the third is to protect renters, homeowners, and local businesses from discrimination and displacement, and protect our environment from destruction. All right, so we're going to quickly look at some recent activities here. As you're well aware, the department has a very wide portfolio. This is an attempt to highlight kind of a few of the key programs and successes while we begin to look ahead into the coming year. So we've chosen a few numbers here to, to highlight some of our work over the past year. Primarily here, we focused on the past 12 months in, in these numbers, for the most part because we've had a fairly large turnover in terms of staff in HCD, especially on the division head level. And so we really wanted to kind of pinpoint some of the work that we've been able to do here over the past year. So I'll just run through some of these real quick. Eighty-four local small businesses who have received direct city funding in 2022 through our various grant programs. A little over $2 million we have raised in state funds for local projects, those are either directly city-led or city pass-throughs to private projects. $1.3 million that we've leveraged already through our ongoing BIG Business Investment Grant Program in FY '23. So this is a new program that's just started, this $1.3 million number indicates kind of the amount of private dollars that folks have brought with our kind of small match from the grant program. Moving into housing here, 135 tenant inquiries that have been responded to just since October of 2022. And then, as, you might be aware, we had our building improvement and electrification grants this year as well. We awarded nearly $700,000 in grant funds to date through those programs, as well as distributed over $100,000 in household assistance funds to local residents. And then just a quick stat for you here, nine years is currently the average Tacoma Park renter tenure for our rent-stabilized properties, so great news there. And then just very quickly, wanted to highlight just one small component of equity here. Equity was a very large component of the strategic plan as a whole and kind of looking at how we do our work. And so I just wanted to kind of pull up here very quickly, you know, one way we could look at equity, and that we do look at equity, equity is kind of geographic distribution, excuse me, geographic distribution. And so I just pulled up two of our recent grants and kind of tried to highlight here some of the award spread for, for the grant awards in those grants. Obviously, some of that is due to kind of existing conditions in these areas, and some of this distribution, you know, may be warranted by those existing conditions, some of them might be things that we need to dig deeper into as we look at this one component of equity in addition to, to the other components. All right, so we're going to jump right into recent accomplishments, again, starting with preservation. Before I hand it over to Devin, I think I'll just touch very briefly on a few of the economic development programs you see here. So you see here our small business support grants. As mentioned previously, we awarded over $260,000 in funding to small businesses in the past year to support businesses after the COVID-19 pandemic. We also have our commercial facade grants. We were able to do a very large commercial facade grant with JBG Smith, private owner of the Tacoma Langley Crossroads. of the Tacoma Langley Crossroads, excuse me, of a property in Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development, on a multimillion-dollar improvement there. And we still have existing facade grant funds that we look forward to distributing in the near future. And then, as you heard, in November, we are very excited, appreciative for our Economic Development Business Service contracts. Those are our contracts with Old Tacoma Business Association, Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority, MHP through the Long Branch Business League, as well as Crossroads Community Food Network.
Thanks, Ira. Councilmember is mayor, Devin McNally. I'm the new Housing Manager. So I'll quickly jump into, knowing that we're a little bit pressed for time, kind of some of the work that housing has been doing in collaboration with economic development. So we've been focusing, like Ira mentioned, our multifamily building grant meant to aid property owners in electrification and building infrastructure improvements to extend the life of the property and improve the energy efficiency. It's $750,000 to 34 properties to address multifamily properties. We've also been doing some technical assistance with our tenants, and that's resulted at 112 Lee Avenue. We helped them secure $600,000 from the state to purchase their property, so they now own their building. They closed in late 2022, and they'll be starting on some renovation work as well to update the building. We also have put forward $250,000 to Hillwood Manor, and that's 96 units of affordable housing as they rehab their buildings and structures there. We also have our rent stabilization program. The Housing Division staff annually monitors these properties. That covers almost 1,600 units. And like he said earlier, the median tenure is nine years in a rent stabilized property, compared to about four years at the county as a whole. And then another quick thing on that is the median rent for a one-bedroom apartment for a rent stabilized property is $964. So looking across at our production, we have our Housing Reserve Fund. We've allocated $400,000 previously for two projects. The first is 320 Lincoln Avenue. That was recently completed and sold to a moderate-income household. There, the city used our right of first refusal. This is a law as part of the tenant opportunity to purchase, where the city can either purchase or assign our purchase rights to a developer. In this case, we assigned to a nonprofit developer, HIP Homes, also known as Housing Initiative Partnership. We're also working on another project. This, we assigned our rights to Habitat for Humanity at 7402 Garland. And what they're doing is they're turning a single-family home into a duplex. It'll be purchased by two low-income homes, and one of the purchasers is a current Tacoma Park resident. We also have our Home Stretch Down Payment Assistance Program. So this is $10,000 to help bridge that down payment that comes from the city. It's a $10,000 forgivable after five-years loan, and we had two of those loans for condominiums located within the city this past year. As Ira mentioned, we have our BIG grants. Those are business investment grants meant to attract and help our local businesses expand. We had $45,000 go out for those. And then we're also working on a retail market study in conjunction with the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority, looking at retail opportunities, what we can do, what's missing in that area, and the hope is, this coming year, to launch a business Then we have our protection work. We have a contract with the County's Code Enforcement Division. They oversee all of our rental properties site, and this past year, they responded to 81 resident complaints, and from that, they issued 44 citations. So those are legal requirements and fines imposed upon property owners who are not keeping their properties up to code. And this is our main tool that we use to try to ensure safe and high-quality affordable housing. We have our landlord-tenant mediation work. We have a wonderful housing specialist. We're hoping to build on that, where we try to facilitate and also address resident complaints and everything from disputes between landlords and tenants over lease terms to illegal fines according to our rent state, or illegal fees according to our rent stabilization ordinance were available. And like Ira previously mentioned, since October 2022, we've responded to 135 of these inquiries. We also have our housing assistance programs. So these include COVID Relief Funds. So this is work to prevent evictions for individuals who have found themselves behind on rent as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. Our Emergency Assistance Fund, which helps residents in need of food, housing, or medicine, and then our Rental Assistance Program. So we've assisted 29 households who were at risk of eviction, distributing a little over $68,000 in assistance to keep them in their homes. Our Emergency Assistant has similarly assisted 29 residents with a $17,000 in assistance for food, housing, or medical supplies, and then 36 households have taken advantage of our Rental Assistance Program. So that was a lot of information. We're going to move on to looking ahead at what our priorities are for 2023. So these are kind of four general buckets. The first is kind of outreach and community engagement. On the housing side, we have an extra position. One of the things we want to do is increase our tenant and community engagement, reaching out into the community, getting FaceTime, being able to direct them to resources, and also build capacity within our multifamily buildings. On the internal side, we have internal processes that we'd like to improve. One is our rental licensing software, making it easier for our landlords to do their compliance quickly, and then also for staff to manage all of our licenses. We oversee about 600 properties. Looking at kind of attraction and redevelopment or reinvestment, we want to look at our policies and where we can incentivize reinvestment in our properties and also attracting new affordable development. So this could be pilots or tax credit programs, ways that the city can pull levers to make it possible for some of our property owners to bring the types of development we want into the city. Another part of that is continuing our inter-jurisdictional cooperation efforts. You heard from MNC PPC tonight about all the work they're doing and the work we're doing with them. We also want to support county efforts around green development, addressing climate change and sustainable, sustainable development, but also working with our State Highway Administration on multimodal improvements, particularly around the crossroads and New Hampshire Avenue, and then engaging with our partners, not only at the county, but Prince George's County and the district as well, looking at ways that we can all jointly manage places like New Hampshire Avenue. We also want to focus in on also activating our public spaces with events that benefit not only our residents, but also support our businesses. So part of that is looking at our vendor, vendor and outdoor cafe permits, and then also looking at our programming, how we activate these spaces through our city-sponsored events and activities. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Ira to talk a little bit about our corridor approach.
All right, I think one more handoff before we wrap. So we just wanted to take a second to also touch, Devin outlined kind of a lot of our citywide policies that we are looking at over the coming year, and the strategic plan talks about a lot of those citywide policies, right? Things like pilots, things like rent stabilization. But one thing is the department, we've also really been looking at, not to detract from that citywide work, but is also thinking about how our work needs to look different kind of in different corridors, right? And how we need to target different corridors for different types of programs based on the existing conditions and needs and goals that those corridors might have. So I wanted to bring this up because I know it was something, a conversation that got started when Director Eubanks presented a few weeks ago, and I just wanted to kind of bring it up again and kind of point out that it's something that's on our mind as we look forward this year, is not just kind of those big bucket citywide policies, but also how those policies live and work within each of these corridors and within the city as a whole. And then lastly, I just wanted to take a second for each of us to kind of touch on some of our division-specific programming that ties to their strategic plan for the next year. You already heard about the Minor-Master Plan. Obviously, what happens both on the, what we call the Washington Adventist area, as well as the Minor-Master Plan area as a whole, is going to be critical for economic development in the city. We also closed on the Recreation Center Parcel, RFP, last week, so staff is still conducting internal analysis, but we're excited to come to you in the coming months with kind of public updates and next steps there. And then two of our big focuses that I know, we've had a few conversations on, one is a kind of a really targeted focus this next year on what we're calling hidden businesses. So these might be at-home businesses, but they also might be businesses that are in corridors or areas that are not supported by our existing service contract entities, right? So how can we, as a, as a city, collectively help support those businesses? And then kind of building off of that business incubation, right? How can we provide spaces in a city where we have limited available retail space? How can we provide spaces for new businesses to come in to try things and provide a safe space where we can be a hub and growth for, as we saw earlier today, the kind of next generation of great businesses for the city?
So kind of wrapping it up with the housing side, what we're kind of focusing on, on programming. You might be aware that we recently were awarded a $500,000 grant from the state to focus on our tenant opportunity purchase law, so not only just capacity building, but then also focusing funds on assisting with the purchase of a former rental facility by the tenants. So getting that up and going, starting that, and that kind of ties into our second part of tenant engagement and capacity building. So with our kind of potential positions that we bring in, being able to go out into the community and build that capacity, so when these opportunities come along, we can take advantage of them. And then the second part is looking at our policies across the city, and particularly within housing, for incentivizing rental building infrastructure upgrades, being aware that like, that quality housing, especially with some units that are aging 40, 50-plus years, get the attention that they deserve, and that property owners are incentivized to really invest in those properties. So with that, we're happy to answer any of your questions.
Great. Thank you so much. I really appreciate you all taking the late hour and walking us through this. I just want to remind my colleagues of the late hour and remind folks that we have additional items on the agenda, and you are free to submit any questions if you have them to our presenters today, if you have a long list. But I guess that's the PC way of saying, let's keep it short. Councilmember Small.
No, I just had one sort of, again, I apologize if it's semi-pointed, but you, you mentioned on several occasions the number of engagements that you've had with tenants. You have it at about 150. How many total requests for tenant engagement have you had?
So I'll use the, the number there is 135 is the number we counted up. I can give you more information, kind of, I can follow up with that in terms of kind of a breakdown of what that is.
Okay, and then my second question is related to something that you implied about the longer-term properties, particularly the vertical properties that are, let's say, where they're in the potential gentrification zone. There seems to at least be some lack of responsiveness on some of the landlords in that area, and we can talk about it more specifically later, I'm sure you already know. But I did want to encourage you to try to be really direct about the long-term potential of the area and the fact that the residents that are there should benefit.
Councilmember Siemens.
I hit the thing twice. There you go. But thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentations tonight. And just real quick, I was wondering if, I know that we've put some money in for assisting people in, you know, catching up on rent or, you know, because of COVID, different reasons, but I'm curious if we keep any statistics, metrics on how successful that is in continuing occupancy, or if we're just putting a Band-Aid on a, too, too large of a problem.
I think that's a great question. We don't necessarily keep a like, follow-up, but that is something that we can start doing.
I think, I'm not trying to add work to your busy schedules, but, but I think the council could benefit from having at least some feel for that, to see whether this is, it's money well spent, but, but just how, how successful we are in trying to help people. Thank you.
Councilmember Gibson.
Yes, I just want to follow up that those kinds of metrics, I think, will be helpful on all of our, all of the programs. You've done some breakout in comparison ratio, but I, you know, you would wonder in each program, the number of recipients that utilize this service, how long did they stay? Did the business make money? I mean, those kinds of things that would help us know that our money is well-spent, convince our constituents that this is something we want to continue doing. We've got another budget season. So I will get, I'd like to talk with you both, but particularly with Ira, to begin to maybe flesh out some of those, some of those metrics of evaluation metrics, performance metrics. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think if I can just touch on that real, real briefly, I think internally, internally, it's absolutely a priority for us, as well as kind of digging deeper into that data and really understanding the impact our programs are, are making.
Councilmember DeBala.
Yes, thank you very much for the overview, and I would urge the new council members to take a quick spin through the original Housing Strategic Plan, Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan. I know you were pressed for time, so you didn't go into details, but there's a lot in there about the philosophy and the intent of, of what we're, what the previous council set out for a long term. What are we trying to do here that I think is, is useful to point out? I, I have some specific questions. I can email you about them, but my general question just has to do with the electrification and, and a building improvement program. So between this money and the money that we're going to hear about in a few minutes, there's still money left, or have we tapped the whole thing out that we, that we set aside for our?
Correct. I think we've spent it all, yes.
It's all gone? Okay. And, and so one of the, one of the stats I would be interested in is what demand did you get that you were not able to satisfy? Because I understand it's two, threefold what you actually were able to fund of legitimate worthwhile proposals. I don't want to hear about the trash. But, but I would really like to know that, because if we become in a situation where we're looking to, to reallocate our bid dollars to make sure we spend them all, that could be very useful to know. And the rest of my questions, I think I can just, oh, one other thing. The corridor-focused approach is specifically to apply to, is it to apply to specific programs? I bring it up because in the strategic plan, it was a very intense discussion. Do we mean that we want to, all types of housing everywhere, all, you know, all types of businesses everywhere? Or are we going to just pick out a couple of neighborhoods that are a little rundown? And we went with the broader approach. So I want to, to get a little more clarity on what you're thinking here with the corridor approach.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think to clarify, you know, we are not saying we're focusing just on these quarters. I think what we're saying, and to, to give you maybe a hard example, and don't, don't hold me to this, because this is just an example right now, but, you know, for example, we have a facade grant program that currently we promote citywide, and anyone, citywide can take advantage of it, right? Facade grants might be the right tool for certain, or might be a better tool for certain corridors than for other corridors, for example, right? And so maybe we say that program is still citywide, but in our evaluation criteria, when we make awards, we look at it a little bit differently. And, and again, that is an example that we have not worked through at all. That's, that's still a citywide program, not going away, but just to kind of give you a flavor for, I think, what we mean when we talk about that corridor approach, is just how can we tailor programs? tailor programs to really meet the needs and the goals of each of those corridors while still meeting the needs of our, our population citywide?
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Hanzan?
Just a quick one. I have been so happy to be able to work with both of you. You've just been incredibly responsive, and I've had so many questions for both of you. And particularly Devin, I, we've had so many issues in our neighborhood already about housing that I, I sit and wonder how you, you must have 100 selves to answer all of the inquiries that you get every day. And therefore, is there not one person that's still missing from your team that you're recruiting for? Am I right about that? Or no? Are you, are you at least one person short on your?
In the FY23 budget, we have four FTEs, the, the housing manager, the housing specialist, landlord tenant mediator, and the rental licensing specialist. We currently have two of those FTEs filled, myself and our housing specialist.
Oh, okay. So there's two, two down. Okay. Yeah, so, and I, I have tried at length to explain, just so you know, to my constituents when they're like, well, they haven't answered me and it's been, you know, 24 hours. I said, well, there's, there's just a couple people there, so they are running as fast as they possibly can. Have you had any success in recruiting for those positions, or are the job descriptions at least finished for those? And I won't put you on the spot any further, I promise. I just, I'm just kind of curious, because I just happened to look at the jobs today, I only saw seven of them on the, on, on the HR site, and I'm particularly concerned about your department.
Yeah. Agreed. Yeah. Yeah, so the, there are, there are some job descriptions that are in draft form. I, I came on in October. It was, you know, before then, you know, there was some, some holding from the perspective of they didn't have a housing manager yet. And so there is work in progress to get a position description out and hire someone in.
Great. Well, thank you both so much. I'm going to hold true to my own rule of being, keeping it brief, but I want to thank you all for, for highlighting some things that I think are critically important for us. The prior presentation, we talked about zoning, is kind of setting the table for the development we want, the development we want to see. But some of the things that you all are working on will also kind of help to further set the, the place settings, right? So the pilot policies, doing the market analysis for the Tacoma Lingley crossroads. I thought we had like a rent stabilization study, or there was some study going on of rent stabilization?
There was a small study that was conducted earlier in 2020, I believe, spring of 2022, correct? So we have a little bit to build off of there, yes.
Perfect. And so I think that all of the work that you all are doing is, is going to be really critical to realizing the full breadth of the items that's included in the strategic plan. So thank you all so much for your work, and I'll, I'll send any other questions that I have via email. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And the next item we have to, to keep the running theme this evening is our Sustainability and Climate Action Framework, and Director Braif Wait is going to walk you through the updates on that.
Thank you. You will note that the, there's a vast amount of information attached to the council agenda, and I would encourage you to, at your leisure, look on each of those attached documents. It's a dense amount of information, lots of information. And as you may be aware, the city's formal efforts on sustainability have been decades-long, but we've had the sustainability manager position in place for seven years, had one staff person in that position until October, and we're still trying to hire for the replacement. So with that, I will say that I am not the subject matter expert of this topic, though I've worked very closely with the subject matter expert for seven years. And our past sustainability manager did an excellent job at positioning the city, and, and again, was sort of the embodiment of that punch-up, kind of bigger than, than you might appear. She got a lot of recognition and programs started for the city. So I've got a PowerPoint that is actually an update of a PowerPoint that Gina Mathi has provided in March 2022, and I hope to go through that fairly quickly. But again, there is so much information available on the city's efforts on sustainability, and some of the documents that I attached to the council presentation will really benefit you to take a look at when you have more time. The city uses the Council of Metropolitan Washington Council of Government for the development of our greenhouse gas emissions inventory. It is something that all member jurisdictions are now using COG for. There's a lot of benefit to that. It means for consistency across the DMV, so Montgomery County's numbers, Virginia's numbers, DC numbers, all generated by the same evaluation tools. 2020 is the current year that we have emissions data for, and the reason for that is largely that information comes from utility companies, and it's very difficult to get that information in aggregate form. And so this is, two years is, is, you know, it takes that long to get that data. So these are new data that we literally just got a couple of weeks ago from Metropolitan Washington Council of Government. You see in that pie chart there, sort of how we break out in terms of greenhouse gas emissions, continues to be building, building energy use in transportation are the largest sources of emissions in the city. Forty-two percent of emissions come from buildings and 48% from transportation. I won't go through the metric tons of carbon dioxide, but you see there in the rest of the chart, kind of how that breaks out. So when questions arise about the focus of the city's sustainability program, this chart kind of drives that point home. Our largest greenhouse gas emissions come from buildings and transportation, and our programmatic responses and development have, have largely been directed to that in the past. This is another chart that came from COG's evaluation. When I first looked at it, I was ecstatic. This is a review of greenhouse gas emissions over time, from 20, 2005 to 2020. And decidedly, the charts look great, numbers are going down. We've got a 20, 27% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions, which is a fabulous, fabulous bit of data. However, you can't look at these numbers without realizing the impact of the pandemic, particularly again, if you're looking at transportation as the largest sector of our greenhouse gas emissions. So you see this reflected area-wide, country-wide, really, probably globally, which isn't to discount the data, it is just to say that we're very likely to see in two years' time a spike back up again. So these numbers are great, but they really were so, so heavily influenced by the global pandemic. Again, when you have time, you can look at this chart and see sort of the various aspects that were reflected in that pie chart, reflected in this. Some of the other interesting information that we got from the last evaluation was there have been some emissions increases, and there have been greater emissions decreases. The increases have come in Tacoma Park specific, this isn't any larger than that, it's very focused on Tacoma Park's data. It's a growth in commercial space, a slight increase in population, and a related slight increase in hydrofluorocarbons. The formula they use to determine hydrofluoric carbons is a function of population and, and consumption. We've seen emission decreases, we have a cleaner electricity grid, and Tacoma Park is really leading the way in that, between commercial solar, and we'll be talking in a bit about community green power. Also reduced miles travels, again, totally reflective of the pandemic, and a decrease in commercial electricity intensity. And you have to wonder if that isn't largely related to the change in hospital use in that building. So the discussions tonight have all tied together so beautifully, couldn't have planned it any, any better. Again, as a recap, and again, the data, that some of the information you have in there, particularly the 2020, excuse me, Climate Emergency Response Framework that the prior council worked so, so strenuously on, established a number of goals, but among them, for the city of Tacoma Park to be net zero by 2035. Montgomery County has a goal of 100% reduction of greenhouse gas emissions by 2035. The state of Maryland, a 50% reduction by 2030 over the 2006 baseline. And COG as a region has a goal similar of a 50% reduction by a 2030 deadline, and 80% by 2050 over the 2005 baseline. And again, the reference point that they've been providing to us is the 2005 as, as the starting point to compare against. In terms of the Climate Emergency Response Framework, a couple of slides that just goes, again, broad picture over some of the priorities that the city had. One thing that we are very excited about is the county has passed a Building Energy Performance Standard, and it covers buildings of 25,000 square feet and above. I included in the packet a document that is a, a summary of the Building Energy Performance Standards. Again, there's so much in there, it would, it would not benefit me to try to explain that to you this evening, but it's a very good summary of what building energy performances are. And so we can look forward to the county implementing that program for large buildings. There are buildings of that size in Tacoma Park. One of the things that the city has, has done, and the prior sustainability manager took the lead on that, working with ACEE, they provided a technical analysis to Tacoma Park to look at implementing building energy performances for buildings between 10,000 to 25,000 square feet. And in fact, there's 45 such buildings that would be impacted in Tacoma Park. And their findings, and I'd be happy to share those with you, it's a, it's a draft report for us, is that significant energy reductions and cost savings if we were to implement Building Energy Performance Standards at that lower level. So that is definitely a matter that the city should take up. I think in, in due time, we want the county's main program to be implemented, the regulation set and underway, and then we'll use that framework to evaluate dropping that level down and to, and right sizing it for Tacoma Park, so that we're really moving buildings forward. And of course, as part of that, you have to have incentive programs, financial assistance and other, in order to help businesses and other large commercial establishments be able to make that transition. The University of Maryland Environmental Analysis Class created a home energy labeling policy for the city. Again, it is something that is kind of a evaluation tool that we've been using. And a component part of Building Energy Performance Standards is benchmarking. So basically, based on your building type, what the function is of that building, whether it's residential, commercial, what type of commercial, it has an energy use factor for that building. So basically, what it does is there's Energy Star Portfolio Manager that the EPA has created. Every building can enter their data and see how they match up to that building performance standard that the county will now be setting. And, and in fact, that law will go into effect to help track those businesses over time and increase the reduction goal over time on a five- or 10-year basis, so that energy efficiency can be baked into the building functionality on a known and planned, planned way. And buildings right off the bat can, can see how comparative their energy use is to other similar buildings. It's not fair to compare a medical office to a warehouse, you need to compare each to each. So Energy Star Portfolio Manager helps do that. And we are looking now at voluntarily establishing that. And in fact, one of the components of our recent FY23 Energy Efficiency Grant Program required the successful applicants to use the Energy Star Portfolio Manager and benchmark their buildings. So we've got a foot in the door, and we're starting there, and we're going to learn as they learn, and we're really excited to keep moving forward with that project. In terms of transportation, the city has allowed for a couple of year, that, years now, curbside charging equipment for EVs. We have, I think, three curbside EV chargers that have gone through our permitting process. Bus shelter improvements, again, in concert with HCD. And, and a future, current underway is a fleet transition plan. The goal is to have an all-electric city fleet by 2035. In terms of the transition plan draft that's been created, it reviews all available EV equivalents to our current fleet, with a goal of no fossil fuel-powered vehicles purchased after 2028. And again, this is to some degree aspirational, certainly has major financial impacts, and as we've learned in the over-a-year wait for our EV sweeper, things take a lot of time currently. There's every indication that's improving and that options are increasing and that financial incentives are, are building. So it, it's not too, too far of a stretch to think that we can get there. Additionally, you need to do some planning, some replacements could be postponed in anticipation of new EV models becoming available. And critical to this, particularly for my own department, as we electrify public works fleet charging infrastructure, we've got to figure out where and how and what it's going to take to charge these vehicles, because that's going to be essential to making the transition. If you're talking about your car at your house, that's, you know, one or two cars, one house, when you've got a fleet of four trash trucks and six different, you know, large, large trucks and vehicles, we have to figure out sort of what the charging infrastructure's going to be. There are grants available for charging infrastructure. What we found is vehicle grants are very unlikely for us, because we just can't get the miles traveled to make it economically make sense. Our vehicles, because we are such a small city and such a confined space, they don't drive distances far enough to pass the rate of return and make it economically feasible. In the green energy framework, a lot of research has been started on legal options and incentives for electrification, developing an electrification roadmap for our city, developing comprehensive electrification education and outreach, and we've been making some great strides in that and working with Montgomery County, which is, we're really queued up in partnership on a great number of programs that I'll speak about in just a moment. Additionally, Montgomery County not only pursued, but has gotten, Community Choice Energy, as we heard from the speaker at, at Public Comments. And so we're looking forward to the impact of that in, in, in the city, because that, more than anything else, will green our power source and greatly reduce greenhouse emissions from the use of the same amount of electricity. So that's a critical piece of moving the ball forward. The existing state renewable portfolio standard will be 50% by 2030. Montgomery County is pursuing the gas-powered lawn care equipment ban. I couldn't find enough details on that, so I, I've reached out to a few people, but I believe they're still establishing regulations. I'm not quite sure where that sits, but that is something that we intentionally waited for the county to move forward on, to make it more impactful and to use their resources in terms of education and outreach on that.
May I, may I have a moment, just to, I happen to be able to talk to county staff today. I got lucky. And I heard that they have just heard that the gas-powered lawn ca-
It's leaf blowers just.
The ban, the ban is now back on the council agenda. There is a county council committee, the TNE Committee, hearing scheduled for February, I want to say 23rd. Anyway, so, so the-
Great. So that's why I wasn't able- So that's why I wasn't able to find anything. It's still in the morass of being introduced and getting on the council agenda. Capital Area Solar Co-op, very effective tool at reducing the upfront cost for solar power, and they are including EV charging as a component of that. It's an annual run, and people can apply and become part of the each year's co-op, and it's a very beneficial way to move forward with solar panels in particular. It also enables you to get a vetted and competitively awarded company through the county. In terms of electrification grants, and we've spoken some of this, I'm speaking just about the FY23 grants that were funded through ARPA for us this year. To that question that you asked, Councilmember Dabala, there were 32 applications received for the electrification grants. 20 were able to be awarded. As a matter of fact, I have that the total requests were over $800,000, almost $1 million. I was just pulling information together and didn't have the full figures because the data was kept in separate files. The total budget that we had was $500,000. So all those funds have been allocated. Money has not been spent. It's just been allocated. We have signed grant agreements. We're moving people through the process, which is a multi-step process. We have had of the 20 that were awarded, we've already made payments to three, so people are jumping in and moving forward. One of the things that we've been doing this year in '23 is finishing up the FY22 grants. So this is the first year that we've had energy efficiency and electrification grants. We've had them three years running. This was by far the largest pot of money that the city was able to provide. In prior years, it's been in the $200,000, $270,000 amount of funds. So many of the grant awardees from FY22 were not able to move forward, particularly those in multifamily buildings, because of delays. We have five projects that were solar panel projects that are now just starting to come online. So we were able to move those funds forward in a budget amendment, so all those projects continue to have their grants. We're making the payments, they're getting the work done. So we're sort of doubling up in terms of the grant allocations for taking place in this current fiscal year. So what's next? As I mentioned, the county implementation of the Building Energy Performance Standards, the gas-powered lawn equipment ban, and other initiatives like building decarbonization. The county is looking at all-electric building standards for new construction. So again, because the county sets the bar for those development zoning-type issues, that's where, really where the power lies in terms of moving that forward into the reducing fossil fuels. The city should consider a voluntary benchmarking program for smaller buildings under the 25,000 square footage that are not going to be covered by county regulations. Very exciting program happening, hopefully by this summer, the Montgomery County Residential Electrification Incentive Pilot Program. And I'm pleased to say that Gina Mathias was a key partner in helping the county develop that program. The success of our grant awards program for the past three years were what they used as a model to build their program on. So really proud of Gina's work on that, and it really put the city out front as a leader on that. First and foremost, and I've included the link there, the program, the county put out an RFP for the Residential Electrification Incentive Pilot Program. They're reviewing the responses from the bid. They anticipate that they'll have a contract in place in the spring, and the program will really get kicked off in the summer. And those will be market rate grants. There is also a low and moderate income grant program that is a little behind the development of the other one, but it is in the works. They're trying to do it as a grant instead of the type of program they have here. Couple of points I want to make about this. The way this county is planning to set up the program is they're going to have a contractor who sets up kind of a home base. It'll be a technical resource center. People can call and ask questions when they want to figure out, what is a heat bump and how do I get rid of my boiler? There'll be, you know, kind of a one-stop shop. So not only will they be able to guide people through the evaluation and decision-making and options, they'll be able to link them up with contractors and resources and move forward, and also have the source of money for those eligible for the grants. In terms of what the county said, to stay aware and on top of this, the county has a pledge, where you pledge to electrify. So if you sign up for the county pledge, which you can get on that website that I've included, you'll automatically be notified of the grant opportunity. So I would urge everyone who's interested in that, and that's something that council can share with your constituents, take the pledge, and you will be in the know on funding resources as soon as anybody else will. So that program, as I mentioned, will provide technical incentives, technical assistance and incentives. It's a market rate program, and they anticipate a summer rollout. The city also hopes to continue electrification outreach and education campaign. A really underused and wonderful resource is the county Green Bank, particularly for commercial and institutional multifamily buildings. We have been able, through our grant program, to tie people to the Green Bank. We provide partial funding, the Green Bank provides partial funding. So it's a really, it's a great way to double your dollars. And they also have technical assistance that they can provide, knowledgeable staff. So the fact that the county has established this Green Bank really is a tremendous resource, particularly for commercial and institutional facilities. Another thing that they can see, a city may want to consider, is a fossil fuel nonproliferation treaty or a prohibition of purchasing fossil fuel power equipment. That is something similar to the Nuclear Free Zone pledge that the city could consider as a way to move itself forward in terms of reducing greenhouse gases. Didn't want the opportunity to pass without saying, there's a whole lot in sustainability. Again, I've focused on the climate resiliency piece and energy efficiency and electrification, but I did want to touch on a handful of other programs that we see in a similar way and that the department is involved. When, you may have heard me mention, Tree Tacoma Program, our partnership with Casey Trees. We are oversubscribed for the fiscal year '23 rollout. It's our first year. The funding for the program comes entirely from the tree fund, so it's not city operating budget or general fund dollars. It's payments that people have made as a tree replanting fee and lieu through the city's tree removal permit program. So we'd like to put those dollars into trees. And so I put a link to the program there. People can sign up. We had a goal of 215 trees planted in this current fiscal year. I think they're already committed halfway through and have other site visits planned, so will more than exceed the requests for that. We plan to include, you know, another round of funding in FY24 and ongoing. Casey Trees has been a wonderful partner to work with, and they do onsite field visits with residents and walk them through the process and make recommendations for native trees on their property. Our battery recycling drop-off program, again, the link is there for more information, very successful. We are sending out boxes of batteries on practically a weekly basis. One point that people need to keep in mind is you can't just dump your box of nasty old batteries in front of our door. Batteries really do present a hazard, so they should be individually bagged or the positive end taped. And the only way we can take them, and the way we have to process them, is that way. So if you're keeping a box of batteries at home, you should be taping the positive end or putting batteries in individual bags. There is a fire hazard associated with batteries. So in order for us to ship them in recycling, that's how we have to prepare them. We're looking at the possibility of combining food waste and our yard waste collection program. Prince George's County's composting facility has got pilot programs started with a number of communities in our area, and so we've reached out to them to see if we can join that combined program. As Councilmember Gibson mentioned, our stormwater resiliency study has kind of gotten underway in earnest. The Low Impact Development Center staff have been making their field visits. We finished two of the five field visits. They're coming once a week, and information about that is there on that link. Didn't mention it before, but police patrol vehicle replacement is going hybrid in fiscal year '23. That's a testament to the wisdom of the police chief and the sensitivity he has to understanding the interest in reducing greenhouse gas emissions. A lot of police chiefs wouldn't be so willing to go that direction, so we're really lucky to have the partnership with the police department. In terms of our PW fleet, we have the new EV sweeper. We have our first hybrid pickup truck has finally arrived. We have EV mowers. We're also electrifying, converting Public Works hand tools and equipment, so that's our blowers, our chainsaws and our related tools. We received a sustainability grant for $10,000 that's going to be focused on circle woods, removal of invasives and native plant restoration. And so our vegetation maintenance supervisor, Anna Mishi-John, will be overseeing that program and will be planning a community outreach to the surrounding neighbors, and we'll be putting information out about that. The New Hampshire Avenue Bike Way Project, again, a program of HCD, tons of information on the city's website, but in terms of walkable, bikeable community, that is going to go a large way towards getting us there. And new sidewalk construction. We have two projects approved, Hopewell, Kentland and Larch, which is both sidewalk and traffic calming. Domer Avenue Sidewalk's been approved, and we're currently in design on the Belford Place sidewalk. And with that, I think that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Gibson?
Thank you. That was really impressive, an array of programs. And I have looked a little bit at some of the background documents in terms of greenhouse gases. To go back to my point or my question or request to the earlier presentation, metrics are great. And so you have these programs, and there is a reduction of greenhouse gases, maybe making, matching that up to the programs or our efforts to, the money that we put into it. So looking again at cross-referencing impact with the program costs. If we have to make changes, we want to know what's the most effective way to use our funds. This sort of question, is the electrification program, does it include, or the various electrification programs, does it include conservation per se? I participated some years ago in what the city sponsored, Pepco kind of. I didn't do any change in my energy. It wasn't energy efficient, I mean, it became more energy efficient, but I didn't, you know, change my boiler or anything, but insulation and those kinds of things. Is that a separate program? Is that ongoing?
The grant programs that we've done have been energy efficiency and electrification, so both.
So energy efficiency may not include any new hardware, et cetera. It's just you might be plugging up holes and that kind of thing.
It could be building envelope work. It could also very well be changing in equipment as well. If you have an inefficient boiler and you replace it with a more efficient boiler, you're going to reduce energy.
Right.
So those two things, it really is building-specific. One of the things we've been able to do, particularly with the low and moderate income grants that we've previously provided, is oftentimes they won't deal with certain things that need to be dealt with, for instance, a leaky roof, because it's not energy efficiency. So what we've been able to do is join our monies to take care of some of those building envelope-type issues so that the energy efficiency work can be done. So we've been very open and flexible, particularly with the low and moderate income grants, and partnering with the various sources of funds to make sure those improvements can be made, particularly in situations where you've got health impacts for the residents.
That's wonderful. I thought it was a great program. It needs to be encouraged even further, and maybe some civic organizations could help kind of be ambassadors for getting that word out. One other, I guess, concern or point is that I noticed that in terms of fiscal considerations, you thought, you've noted in your overview update that there would be possible purchasing offsets to reach our goal. I guess my concern, I think there are opportunities that we could use that money locally rather than buying purchase offsets, which is great to do, but it doesn't help our community. So I would like us to consider using whatever funds we have set aside to reach our goals to be put locally.
Yep, yep. Well, those will all be decisions that the council will make going forward as we move through the Climate Resiliency Plan. If the council chooses to do offsets to meet our 2035 goal, what those offsets are, where they are, how that's implemented will totally be council policy.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This was really informative. Good to get caught up. And I think you emphasized the relationship between the city goals and actions and being able to influence the county to do stuff that we can then take credit for in our greenhouse gas emissions. And that's just great because that was a, that was part of the plan, right? I agree with what Councilmember Gibson said about trying to use the funds that are available to achieve reductions locally as much as possible. And I'm not really, I'm not a fan of purchasing offsets, but I think you knew that, but now everybody else does. I wanted to comment very briefly on the regional picture versus the city picture. I saw a presentation, and I believe I shared it, with everybody about the regional greenhouse gas emissions picture, and they made a statement that they, that much of the building energy use reductions were because of the pandemic, but that they thought some of it would stick. On transportation, not so much, as you said, but the notion that even through the pandemic, literally efficiencies and electrification were being built in to the building systems. And even though people were disparate in different locations, you'd expect it to, the whole thing to be balanced out higher, but it actually balanced out lower, and they expect that to stick. So I thought that was really interesting, and the city data bears that out. I had one other point. Give me a moment. And I'm not remembering it, so maybe somebody else should talk. I'll send you some specific questions later.
Well, thank you so much for presenting tonight. I think one of the things that became really clear during your presentation and the presentation that, from HCD, is the work that I guess members of council and myself have to do in terms of working with Annapolis to identify those bills where there may be resources, especially with infrastructure bill dollars making their way out, a focus on energy efficiency, affordable housing, making sure that, I guess, this conversation is somewhat coming full circle with where we began with Ann around identifying those priorities and those bills that we really want to push for to make sure that those resources that may be potentially available reach the local level. And there are more resources that are starting to be made available, and I think the biggest thing is just making sure that we, you know, we are able to lobby on our end, but also making sure that staff have the capacity to be able to identify and apply for those resources is going to be critically important over the next year or so because there are a number of grant programs that are starting to roll out, but you have to have the capacity in order to be able to apply for them and actually get those funds. So it's not necessarily a question for Director Breitweig, but just a note of next steps in action for members of council in terms of how we play a role in making sure that those resources, or that we could push to make sure that those resources are, the city of Tacoma Park would be Tacoma Park would be eligible for them, and that we're really trying to push to make sure that we're able to, to apply for them.
Councilmember Gibson?
Just bringing up our role in terms of the region and impacting, being a player and getting the funds that we need. I also, looking at how, what the council, COGS do and what they're counting and measuring, one thing that's missing is any kind of valuation or counting of what sequestration impacts. In other words, the trees that we plant are mitigating our climate emergency, and yet it's not being reflected. And so it's something that I've thought about, I've been talking with a couple of folks about, lobbying that it be considered as well as a way to, not only just for our, that we get the benefit of that in terms of points, but that we're actually dealing with the environmental issues with green, with our native, our trees and other, particularly the trees, but also wetlands, et cetera, can mitigate our, the carbon footprint.
Yeah, let me share with you, Councilmember Gibson, that trees are included in the greenhouse gas emissions inventory. So in our particular one, and I can share with you COGS database, but we actually gained the benefit of 1,876 megatons of carbon as a result of our tree canopy.
And if I'm not mistaken, the COGS has a staff-level working group on trees.
Yeah.
And I believe they are doing a regional sequestration study right now.
Yep. So trees were included in the evaluation. It's the first year trees have been included in the evaluation, but yes, there's been awareness of that. So we do see the impact of tree canopy in our greenhouse gas.
And our casey trees is an investment there. I mean, we should get credit for that. We're adding to our canopy.
I do have one other question. I'm really sorry.
Can I ask a question related, though, to just that?
Yes, because I was going down the tree.
This might be a little bit off, but because I haven't had time yet to read the new tree policies that have been put in place, do they now give households or those who put the trees onto their property some sort of carbon credit, if you will, for planting trees, since we're, have a 2035 goal as a city and it's being counted towards our mitigation efforts? Is that now accounted for in some way, or do you know?
My understanding is that the canopy, overall canopy evaluation, which we do on a three-year basis, that data is being used to track canopy, total canopy cover in the jurisdiction. So not individual trees.
Yeah, so as a homeowner, for example, or a property owner, if you put a tree on your property, you know, you have to replace trees, you know, to a certain level. I know there were some people who put in solar panels and took out a tree, and they were fighting very hard to get sort of credit for, carbon credit, you know, if you will. So that's, that's not currently part of the calculation?
No, no.
It's an interesting, I think with our ambitious goals of our 2035 goals, and being a person who has multiple trees on my property, it does come to mind that that's something we might want to consider as a council in the future, just putting that out there.
Yeah. So Councilmember DeBala was a part of the subcommittee that dealt with the tree, the tree ordinance and the revisions. That point did come up about, not from the perspective of like a carbon credit, but from the perspective of if I have 10 trees already on my property and one happens to fall down, can my replacement totals take into account the other trees that I already have on my property? So my replacement, let's say because of the diameter of the tree and all of those good things that I know very little about, my replacement would be like five new trees or a tree of a particular size, and maybe because of the trees I already have, I don't have the space to hold those kind of trees. That was something that I believe was discussed, but I think we ultimately did not include, in essence, a tree credit based on the number of trees that you already have on your property. So that was something that was, if I remember correctly, I think it was something that was brought up. But we, we did not focus on that. We focused, and I could, I will definitely defer to Councilmember DeBala on this, but we did try to lessen some of the replacement numbers and kind of thinking through what would be an allowed removal as it pertains to health and safety and kind of broadening that a little bit, which could impact the number of trees that people would have to replace, because if that tree removal is deemed, you know, due to health and safety, then the replanting wouldn't necessarily apply. But Councilmember DeBala, please correct me if I'm wrong, because I know you did a lot related to that one.
So if by, if by carbon credit you mean tree credit, then that's the answer, rather than giving people the credit after the fact. We were looking at the front end, how much do you have to replace when different things happen? And when can you remove a dead tree? And so we were trying to give homeowners more flexibility at the front end, not afterwards. If by carbon credit you literally mean carbon credit in the greenhouse gas inventory, that is accounted for in a different way, by taking the total picture every three years of the whole city through the tree canopy inventory and counting the changes in that into the inventory. So I don't know which one you meant, but hopefully.
I'm more thinking about, you know, how expensive it gets for homeowners or landlords to, yeah, to replace trees and take them down, and how we can motivate, because we have, because there is financial value to the city as well now in, or maybe I shouldn't call it financial value. There is value to the city in reaching our targets, and homeowners should get some sort of credit that might be worth dollars to them, and that's, that's a good thing.
So, yeah.
Yeah, but anyway, I need to do my homework and read the tree policy versus making you explain it up here.
Yeah, and let me just add two, couple things. We have definitely traveled far off the conversation, but I don't want the opportunity to go by. There's a couple of things that tree planting are associated with credit. One is our stormwater utility fee now has a credit program. Tree planting is a creditable item, so if people plant trees and document those trees, they can take, take credit for that, and that application is available on the city's website. In terms of the greenhouse gas inventory, you do realize this is a kind of a global, international set of standards that is used, so we don't want to calculate ours different than everybody else. So it's a very fine science in terms of how and, how it's done and what they've included. We're very glad that trees are now included in part of the evaluation. So anyway, there's a, that could be a whole other topic on our city's tree policy.
And I look forward to talking about that at some point. Very quickly, one question about the tree policy, and then I guess Councilwoman Small has a question. You mentioned the tree planting coming out of the tree fund and that we had been oversubscribed, understanding that there's a staff capacity issue also, but is there money in the tree fund to expand?
Yeah.
And we would just have to authorize that?
Right. There's currently $258,000 in the city's tree fund.
Okay.
Of which we spent $40,000 this year for that program.
Right. And we just wanted to even see if it would work to do this, and it does, and that's great. And so now we can see what the next step is.
Yep.
Thank you.
Councilmember Small?
I'm sorry, Darrell, for bowgarding your microphone, but I don't feel good enough to go sit back there. The question that I have, though, is, given the depth and breadth of this and the technical expertise that we have there, is there a document or publication for regular old citizens to feel like they are a part of this process? I do feel to some degree like we are over technically capacity expertise here. It's not lost on me that we didn't get to talk during the housing and community development thing, but we've had an expanded conversation here, so I'm just curious.
I'm not quite sure how to answer that. We have a ton of information on the city's website.
Like linear, like, hey, let's, let's be environmentally fit, we can do these things.
Yeah. And, yeah, there is nothing, I'm not quite sure what would, what would be most helpful there in terms of just basic information about what you can do. There's a ton of stuff that you can find on the web. Montgomery County certainly has a ton of information. And again, that link that I had on this thing about the electrification pledge, that starts at ground zero for walking you through the steps of what to do. So there's a lot of, lot of resources available.
Apologize, apologize, but she has to be on the microphone. I guess what I'm talking about is, to some degree, there has to be some participatory element, and I think maybe Kara was kind of getting at this, that there, there seems like there's a lot going on, and it seems like there is a lot of interest in that continuing, but it doesn't necessarily seem like there are entry points for the average person to enter into this world of sustainable awesomeness in Tacoma Park.
Gotcha, gotcha. Yep, yep. Currently, there is not. For those of you that were, you know, a couple of years ago, the city engaged in a whole community engagement effort around our consultants, Cadmus and others. We had forums here in the auditorium where people put up stickers and, you know, we've had those. It's been a while. And I guess the last thing I want to say is critical, and I should have had it on my next steps, we need to replace our sustainability manager, or none of this will happen, so.
All right. Great. Well, thank you so much for presenting tonight. And I know we had a little bit more of a technical discussion in this regard, but we also had very technical public comments. So it is very, very helpful to make sure that we are having discussions, particularly when there's a number of residents in our community that are providing us with very detailed comments and questions, concerns about what we're doing. With that, I will turn things back over to the city manager, and we will talk about the library.
Madam Mayor, if I can, did you want to do a time check with your council, get a consensus? Make sure that we can continue. I think we got five slides that we can go through real quick.
Do you have an estimate for that, a quick? Your quick may be different than Mike's.
Like, probably like 15 minutes?
I timed myself earlier today, and it was less than 10.
That we're good?
We also have a voting session scheduled?
I need my proxy. I think it's time.
Okay. So, so council members, all those in favor of continuing with this meeting per our time cutoff of 11:00 PM?
I am in favor of getting at least the presentation, because she has.
Your schedule?
I'm in favor of at least hearing the presentation, because Director Jones has been so patient.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Can the vote wait, or no? Does it, I?
The actual vote is necessary, needed tonight, so Anne could go back to D-20, because they're waiting to see what you all do tonight.
What we want to do. Yep. Okay. So all those in favor of continuing this meeting until, I guess if we could at least get until 11:30?
Are we still, are we having discussions still? Can I talk?
Sure. Councilmember Small?
Is it possible to?
You had to be on microphone.
I apologize for this. This is all exceedingly melodramatic, and I don't like it. But is it possible to provide someone a proxy under council rules pertaining to these kinds of things, or no?
If, I'm looking at the city clerk. We can allow for a proxy. If you are not available, then you're, you would basically not be considered as part of the vote.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
I'm done.
Okay. Oh, no, no comment, or you're done with everything? Okay. All right. So all those in favor of continuing this meeting until 11:30?
Aye.
Well, I guess I should say I would like to make a motion that we continue this meeting until 11:30. Do you have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. All right. So it sounds like we have two.
I abstain.
So it looks like we do not have enough votes.
I am still, I am sorry, I'm a little bit undecided here. I'm just a little unclear. We really need to get this vote out?
Yes, we do.
Is that right? Okay. Then I guess I'm in favor of continuing. I wish we could find a way that Councilmember Small could vote without being here. There's no, no way to do that.
Nope, there is no way to do that?
It is what it is. I have chronic illness. It is what it is.
Totally understand. Okay. Is there a question?
I mean, is it possible that the presentation be shortened just to what we need in order to make the vote, rather than having a full presentation?
We were allowing for 15 minutes. It is now 11:14, which means we now have 16 minutes, which is what was before us. If.
It's fine.
Okay. All right. So it looks like folks are willing for us to continue. So I'll turn things over to our director, library director.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm all caught up on the discussion about the state capital grant proposal from last week's meeting, and I wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to discuss this issue a little further and hopefully answer any questions that you may have about the proposal. There has been a learning curve for me with this process, and while this is my third major capital project that I have navigated professionally, it is the first one in the state of Maryland. So there's been a lot to learn about funding sources available and protocol. But I'll do a quick overview of the process more generally and then a more substantive dive into the specific proposal. There are a number of requirements associated with state capital grants, and I think most of them can be nested under these categories. There's a two-year rule, which states that potential awardees must already have matching funds for a project or be able to submit proof within two years of the effective date of the grant agreement. It's not a problem, because we are already citing the matching funds in the proposal. There's a seven-year rule that all of the grant funds have to be spent within seven years, and that's also not a problem, since we're 18 months out from completion once ground is broken. And then there is a review by the Department of General Services. We've already vetted RRMM, our architect, through the Department of General Services, but we would need to make sure that any other vendors, like Doyle Construction, pass their muster, and we have no reason to believe that they would not. And then the Maryland Historical Trust would need to review the project as well. So regarding the process part of it, we're still on this first bullet point, the very early stages of exploration and vetting through our delegates. If our delegates recommend us for funding, we would be included in a legislative bond initiative. And while the specific action item is called a bond, these would be grant funds that do not have to be repaid. And then if we were awarded the funds, we would start vetting vendors through the Department of General Services and proceed from there. We did previously have a state capital grant awarded in fiscal year 18 in the amount of $300,000, and it utilized the municipal bond funds as the matching fund source, so we were unable to use that again as a matching fund. This grant went towards the contract with RRMM for design and engineering services, and we finished that grant earlier this calendar year in fiscal year 22. I came on board after the process to vet vendors, but our former director, Ellen Arnold Robbins, left really thorough documentation of the process, and I'm confident that we can fulfill those terms again. This proposal for next fiscal year is in the amount of $2 million with ARPA funds as the matching source, which also takes care of our fulfillment of the two-year rule. And again, the seven-year rule is also moot, since the project should break ground very soon, and will take about 18 months to complete. Having the fiscal year 18 grant behind us, I had kind of written that off as an option again, until the ARPA budget was passed that included $4 million for the library and community center redevelopment. And we've typically been referring to the ARPA allocation. And we've typically been referring to the ARPA allocation and its total amount of $4 million, but it's actually $2 million that is specifically allocated to this project with an additional $2 million on hold for the project, since we really didn't know what to expect when we went out for bid at the time that the ARPA budget was finalized. That second $2 million that's on hold is currently part of the available funds for this project since it is necessary to complete the project. We're really fortunate that Doyle came in with such a competitive bid because for a while there, this project was looking like it might be out of reach. And our construction manager had advised early last year at the height of the escalating inflation, particularly with regards to construction, that bids could come in $2 million higher than Doyle's did. So I'm very grateful that we have sufficient funds for many reasons, but also because it presented an opportunity to potentially reallocate some of the ARPA funds if we could secure additional funding. So this proposal would use the $2 million that are explicitly allocated for this project to match the grant, potentially freeing up the funds that are on hold, which I'll cover in the next slide. So there were two primary goals for this proposal. The first was to augment our safety net because this is an important community anchor project and a new library and renovated community center put us in a better position to meet our residents' needs and provide excellent and innovative services. The library and computer center are core components of providing equitable services to Tacoma Park residents regardless of whether they're homeowners, renters, seniors, children, and all levels of digital literacy in particular. And I want to make sure to reiterate that this project is, it is fully funded, including a contingency for 5% of the general contractor contract amount. So if we didn't move forward with this proposal or if we were not selected for a grant, the project would still proceed to completion. If we are selected, and this is kind of a low-risk, high-reward situation because if we are selected, again, these are grant monies, they don't need to be repaid. That said, it has been my experience that unexpected things can happen in a capital project budget and this proposal cites inflation concerns that I didn't want to ignore. The contract is for a fixed amount, but inflation is still a continuing concern, particularly for any change orders that result throughout this process. And change orders are part of every construction project. They're very difficult to avoid. And they do also exist outside of the agreed-upon construction budget. So because of this, they are subject to inflation risk. We don't anticipate that being a problem, but my experience wants me to be prudent, especially since this is the culmination of 10 years of conversations and planning and we've already invested a lot in it, which takes me to the second goal, which is to be responsive to the climate that we're operating within. The community discourse, especially around the use of ARPA funds, is something I've tried to be sensitive to and this proposal is an effort to provide some resourceful responsiveness. So if we proceed with this proposal and are awarded funds, it would free up unused ARPA funds, up to $2 million, reflecting the amount on hold for the library and community center redevelopment for ARPA projects that reflect this council's priorities, whether that's to expand existing ARPA projects or to look at new efforts since we have until the end of calendar year 2024 to obligate the funds and until the end of 2026 to spend them. And I included this slide just to give a better visual of the numbers I've been discussing. It's been, I think, a little inconvenient that there's so many amounts in the amount of $2 million. So this hopefully illustrates it a little bit better. The last line reflects a positive balance in the amount of $25,000 after all of the current obligations are fulfilled. So we are starting from a balanced budget with this project. And I apologize, the construction contingency should read 5%, not 10%. The best way to find a typo is to publish something. So if we moved forward with this proposal and were awarded $2 million, the funding source table at the top would be edited to reflect $2 million in dedicated ARPA funds, a new line for $2 million as a fiscal year 24 state capital grant, and another new line for $2 million in ARPA funds on hold that could be used if we encountered conditions necessitating its use, but that we would expect to release for other uses at the conclusion of the redevelopment process. So I said I would be quick. This was pretty quick and I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you so much. And just as a reminder, we will still need to push for a vote and we have about seven minutes. Councilmember Hansak? I see your light. Perfect. Councilmember Small?
Yes, I just wanted to say, Jessica, that I appreciate the amount of work and specificity that you put into this proposal. My only concern about this has ever always been the procedural efficacy of not bringing it before the council first. I do understand the validity of going after the grants in matching funds because you don't have to pay those back even if they call it a bond. My question to you is, do you anticipate or has there been any sort of impetus within the staff? And Jamal, this may go to you as well, about what you would do with the ARPA funds that you could potentially free up if we did get the shovel ready match? Like, do you know where you want to put it, per se? I'm just curious.
I will just jump in on that. It would come back to council to determine where they wanted to reapportion ARPA funds and there may be other funds that have been earmarked that would also come under your consideration again.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I was just wondering if you anticipate a stressor on the current budget cycle. You know, it is, you know, the last thing I'd say about this is that, you know, when we talk about the project being at budget, we also talk about the budget being $2 million in debt. We're talking about things that are, can be across purposes to each other. And so I just was trying to see or make if there was any sort of direction that staff had already considered for a reallocation out of just expertise, like, oh, we're going to have a gap in X.
Councilmember Small?
It's okay if you don't. I just was wondering.
Not yet. And I want to make sure, and you talked about as far as to general fund and ARPA. And I just want to say, we had to be very careful because we sent U.S. Treasury the $10 million standard allowance that's already designated for certain projects. And so we wouldn't be able to add anything or use any more money of ARPA from general fund.
So theoretically, then, the allocation would be, that if we were to receive these funds, then we'd be effectively working with a cushion for additional ARPA funding mechanisms and nothing more at this point? Okay.
And one thing, councilmember Small, that is correct. Basically, we would free up ARPA dollars. Council would have to make a decision on where we would like those dollars to be obligated. We would have to confirm with the Treasury as to whether or not that's an approvable use. And then we would have to spend that money by 20, or at least obligated by 2024 and have that project done by 2026. Now, there are changing rules that are happening where there may be more flexibilities that are becoming available. And so our options in terms of what the Treasury would approve in terms of the uses are kind of up in flux. But that is the process that we would have to undertake as I see it.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the prospect of receiving grant funds.
Let's, can we wait, councilmember Small, until we address the other lights that are here? Council, councilmember Dabala?
Two points and two questions. Don't, please, I agree. This is a good idea. Thank you for doing it. Don't confuse my concern about procedure with my enthusiasm for doing this. That's point number one. Point number two is I was also assuming that if we freed up our money, it would go to other ARPA projects affecting vulnerable communities either, and that we are going to have other reallocations within the ARPA budget and that's all going to happen, you know, sometime soon probably, but not right now. Two questions. Maryland Historical Trust reviews every project?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then we know that ARPA is a legal matching fund source.
It's my understanding that it is.
Because it's technically federal money, but then it's now our money because it's in our bank account. So that's, just checking. Will I go through all this and then find out it's not? Okay.
Right.
Yeah, that was it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Fulter?
I guess, two questions. One would be, I mean, is there any other project similar to this that we're not thinking of, that we're going to be, you know, doing this project, asking for the grant? And then there's some other project that we can't ask for a grant for in a similar fashion because we're doing this? Like, are we spending our, you know, capital with the state legislature on doing this?
I realize that was your question.
I mean, I guess, yeah, that's.
So, yeah, so these dollars are typically reserved for CIP-related matters. The only other, like, capital improvement-related matters. The only other projects that could potentially be on the list could maybe be the rec center, but we're not quite there yet to ask for anything very specific. So this particular proposal actually has come at a time when we are kind of in between CIPs, so to speak.
And then my.
And I was going to just also say, it's, the state was dealing with a, I think it was like a $2.5 billion surplus and so most of the money is going to come out of capital. So there's money there and that's kind of where, and working with Anne last year and this year, is where the focus is, will be in the future too.
Okay. And then, just when I read this resolution, it's not really clear to me that we're, like, explicitly saying that if we get the grant, that the ARPA money will definitely come out of the library project and go back into the ARPA fund, just when I read it. I mean, I don't understand. I mean, like, it might say that to you. I just want to make sure that that is what we are guaranteeing because to add more money to the library project makes me a little uncomfortable and I have to think about it longer than right now.
Okay. What we can do is, before the final vote, add a second resolve clause that would make that point clear.
Thank you. I'm done.
Councilmember Hansak?
I am just wondering, I'm not sure who this is directed at, but can someone comment from maybe senior management? How quickly have you been able to expend $2 million of ARPA funding so far? I'm wondering about the burn rate because $2 million is not a small amount of money and I'm just wondering if it could potentially be a little bit difficult for us to meet that deadline that we've got of, what is it? It's 2026, fiscal year 26 at the moment, without knowing whether it's going to be extended. And we've got a lot of ARPA dollars already and some of it I know is not spent, so.
I would say it's a little bit different with the capital project. We'll be able to spend once the project gets going for the library. Roz, if you can speak to the other projects?
Sorry, I'm speaking specifically to the, let's say this ends up being $2 million extra that gets added, then we would need to spend it down if it goes into the ARPA pool. Am I making sense? Yeah, not the capital, not on capital.
I think it depends, of course, on how it's reallocated. If it is a new stand-up-from-scratch program, that's much heavier lift for staff. If it's adding additional funds to some of the ARPA programs we're already spending on, money on, energy efficiency, direct cash assistance, rental assistance, I think we could much more confidently get that money spent in the time required. Right. I mean, there are many.
So that is to say that we are not having trouble burning the funds at the rate that we need to at the moment across the board on ARPA funding, except for the part that was allocated for the library? Is that true?
I wouldn't say.
I mean, are we burning at a good rate at the moment to meet the deadline of the end of fiscal year 26?
I think we are. My only caution is that if it's a new program, if it's something that we haven't, that we don't already have in the works, then it will take longer and it's harder to predict what that would look like. But if it's augmenting existing ARPA programs or augmenting existing city programs, adding funds to food insecurity or something like that, then I think we can pretty confidently say we can do that.
I think one thing that, you know, the presentations tonight were by design, right? So we've heard already tonight that our ARPA programs that were geared towards building our multifamily building, construction projects, that we had far more requests for funds than we were able to actually get out the door. The same was true with our energy efficiency dollars. So there is definitely a need for those additional resources and actually, these were quite quick burns. So if council were to decide, if we were to get this money and council were to decide, we have an extra $2 million, I can assure you, and I'm looking at, it will go. It will go pretty quick, especially if we're able to direct those funds to programs that we know there's a weak list for the support. So with that, we'll make your motion.
Yes. I move that with the appropriate clause, oh, sorry. With the appropriate concerns that councilperson Fulter had about a specificity of allocation that we move to, or I move to, with those concerns, accept the resolution as valid.
All right.
So moved.
Does that make sense?
Okay. Let's do it this way.
Yeah, I don't know what to say. I'm tired.
Who would like to move, would someone like to move the resolution regarding legislative bond initiative for library construction?
Yes, so move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do you have any amendments?
Yes. The amendment is, be it further resolved that any ARPA funds freed up by state capital grant funds acquired, be utilized for other ARPA eligible programs that benefit our most vulnerable.
All those in favor of that amendment? Any opposed? All right. So now, we're going to vote on the resolution as amended. All those in favor of the resolution regarding the legislative bond initiative for library construction? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? Okay. So the proposal, and again, I just want to make sure everybody understands what we're doing right now. We are moving forward a resolution that will allow staff to submit a proposal to our legislators to obtain grant funds to support augmenting our use of ARPA dollars for the library. All right. We made it. All right. So with that, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Director Jones, I appreciate you all staying the night and this meeting is officially adjourned.